Together, the City Council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for July 13th, 2020. Would you please, we have a flag coming on to the screen. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll of the members? Ms. Hoppy?
Present.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Here.
Mr. Urban?
Present.
This whole team?
Present.
Dr. Weaver?
Here.
Mr. Stites?
Present.
Newest celebrity, Leah Dozeman?
Here.
And Valerie Nosler Beck?
Present.
Mr. Mayor, all members of the council are present. Thank you. We have no proclamations this evening. Councillors, in your packet, you have our City Council minutes for June 22nd, 2020, and study session notes for July 6th, 2020. If there are no corrections, the minutes will stand as presented. Okay, there are no corrections. Without, unless I hear objection, the approval will, the agenda will stand as presented. Okay. We are going to go to citizens' right to speak. Citizens may speak on any matter, not on the agenda, for a maximum of three minutes under citizens' right to speak. The mayor pro tem will be our timekeeper. Citizens who wish to speak on a public hearing item, and we have an item number one that's a public hearing, or a decision, resolution, or motion, may speak when that item comes up on the agenda at the conclusion of the staff report for that specific item. Citizens may comment on any agenda item in writing before noon on the day of the meeting at WheatRidgeSpeaks.org, and all of those comments are included in the public record for the item that they address. Citizens may, citizen comment may be made in person at council chambers, and we have several people in council chambers tonight, on the Zoom virtual meeting format, using the raise your hand function, or on the telephone. The public's microphones have been unmuted at this time. If you are not speaking, please mute your telephone or your Zoom virtual meeting button to mute your telephone, and that, and that will decrease our background noise. We are going to, we've got a little feedback coming in from someone. If you can mute your device, that would be great. Thank you. We have, we're, Ms. Scheck with our staff is going to help us tonight to coordinate our meeting speakers. I'm going to go to Ms. Scheck. Do we have speakers in the, in the room now that we could call upon for citizens' right to speak?
We do, Mayor. First up is Ihor Figlus with Vivian Voss on deck.
Okay. When, when you come to the podium, please give us your first name and your last name. If you would please spell your last name, and give us your address, and then you will have three minutes, and you may proceed at that time. So, will our first speaker please come forward?
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Ihor Figlus, F-I-G-L-U-S. I live at 9775 West 36th Avenue. I want to talk to you about the agenda item up for tonight, the rezoning at 9800 West 38th. I just want to talk about, I just want to speak on the-
Uh, Ms. Scheck, are you talking about agenda item number one?
I want to speak about procedure for tonight. I would like to ask the mayor and city council to, I know that previously in certain public hearings, that people have been restricted to three minutes' time to speak. However, this is an important issue for, for the neighborhood. I would like to ask you to provide a little bit of leeway. I know that previously, the, there were no restrictions on the amount of time to speak, and there were situations where people were allowed to give their time, but several people have been appointed to act as representatives, and so, I would, I mean, nobody's going to harangue you and keep you up till midnight, but I think that because other, like the city and the applicant are given seven, eight minutes' time to speak, I think equal time should be given to the citizens, and so I'd ask you to provide some leeway in that rule. Thank you.
Ms. Scheck, can you bring our second speaker in?
Yeah, second speaker is Vivian Voss with Joanne Sarantino on deck.
Hello. It's so good to be legitimate and be here in City Council. You all are missing a good party. It looks like Hollywood Square's up there. I don't know what you're seeing of us, and you're all bodyless. So what is that, talking heads? We'll be having a party soon. Anytime you want to join us at City Hall, you're welcome. Come on down. Thank you.
And now we have, let's see, so we have Joanne Sarantino, and Raleigh Sarantino is on deck.
My name is Joanne Sarantino. I live at 4175 Teller Street. I would like to defer my time to Raleigh.
For mayor pro tem, we put six minutes on the clock for the next speaker then.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm here tonight to speak about referendum 2E, which appeared on last November's ballot. That referendum repealed Wheat Ridge City Ordinance 1667, which passed in May of last year by the then-city council. That ordinance, 1667, rezoned four individual residential properties in Wheat Ridge from residential R3 to planned residential development, PRD, which would have allowed a density increase from four single-family dwellings to 38 three-story townhomes in less than two acres in a residential area in Wheat Ridge. What is most important to recognize now is why that referendum occurred. Starting last year in about February 2019, and continuing through March, April, and into May, at almost every city council meeting, numerous Wheat Ridge citizens appeared time and time again at city council meetings to voice, express, and/or otherwise present their objections in opposition to that rezone in a residential neighborhood. Those Wheat Ridge citizens' voices fell on deaf ears, as evidenced by that city council vote, which approved Ordinance 1667. Our representatives on city council simply chose not to listen to its citizens nor represent their constituents. After that happened, Wheat Ridge citizens responded. Citizens of Wheat Ridge initiated referendum 2E. They obtained over 2,000 Wheat Ridge citizens' signatures on referendum petitions in less than 45 days, and were successful in getting that referendum placed on last November's ballot for a vote of the people. You all know the outcome. There is a fundamental principle here, which is, when our elected or appointed, as the case may be, city council representatives choose not to listen to their citizens nor represent their constituents, then we, the citizens of Wheat Ridge, are going to take charge. You saw this happen. This was recently demonstrated with referendum 2E. 6,130 Wheat Ridge citizens voted to repeal Ordinance 1667. That vote represented over 61% of those Wheat Ridge citizens who voted last November. This was by no means a blue-ribbon performance by our city council. In fact, on the contrary, our then-city council simply failed in their duty to represent Wheat Ridge citizens. I repeat, our then-city council failed in their duty to represent Wheat Ridge citizens. Our current Wheat Ridge city council should certainly take lesson from those facts and hopefully not go down that same road. There's another fundamental principle here, namely, the city of Wheat Ridge belongs to its citizens, not to the developers, most of whom do not live in Wheat Ridge, and not to the city staff, who similarly, mostly do not live in Wheat Ridge. It is not apparent that our city staff works for Wheat Ridge citizens in these rezoning matters. There just seems to be a too cozy relationship between existing Wheat Ridge city staff and developers with little or no communication or involvement with affected neighbors and/or citizens. It is also important to understand and recognize that in addition to the 6,130 Wheat Ridge citizens who voted no on referendum 2E, there exist in this city several thousand other Wheat Ridge citizens who sincerely believe in their city, who sincerely believe their city council simply does not want, does what it wants, regardless of what the citizens want. And those other Wheat Ridge citizens simply throw up their hands in frustration and abdicate getting involved. This is an important issue. Therefore, I'm here tonight on behalf of those 6,130 Wheat Ridge citizens who voted no on 2E last November, and several thousand other Wheat Ridge residents who honestly believe their elected officials have no interest in listening to them, in attempt to pursue, I'm here in attempt to persuade and to appeal to this Wheat Ridge city council to please, 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 prevent us from going down that same road again.
Ms. Scheck, can you bring in our next speaker, please?
Thank you, Mayor. That was everybody that was signed up to speak in chambers under citizens' right to speak.
Do we have, let's use our raise hand function in the Zoom format, is there, if you would like to speak, would you please raise your hand in the Zoom format?
And Mayor, I have Local Works and with Claudia Worth on deck.
Are you, are you ready for me?
Yep.
I hear you. Would you please give us your first name and your last name and your address, please?
Here. My name is Kate Cook. I'm with Local Works here in Wheat Ridge. Our address is 4251 Kipling Street, and I'm here tonight just to give council and the community a quick update on some outreach, some fun community outreach, and some business support activities that we have going on. Beginning this week, we are starting our second round of Chalk of the Town. This is a great public art partnership between Local Works and the Cultural Commission, and we place chalk art at various businesses around town. And this week, we will be featuring Mod Mood, Swiss Flower, Taza de Cafe, I always say that wrong, sorry, Ziggy's Twisted Smoothie, and Clear Creek Bet, and we're also going to be at Tootsie's, which is a brand-new business that just opened. So that's going to be pretty fun, get out, see the art. We've been getting some really good press from the community, so we're really able to promote our businesses and all the great things happening in Wheat Ridge. Also going on is our virtual bingo, so again, another way to get our residents interacting with our businesses and other great things that are happening here in Wheat Ridge. So when you complete your card, you get entered to win a gift certificate to a local Wheat Ridge business. On the, at the end of the month, on Friday, the 31st, we'll be showing another movie on the ridge in partnership with Lutheran Medical, so this is pretty fun. We'll be showing Dora and the Lost City, so it'll be a pretty exciting night. And then farther on the horizon, we'll be doing another TLC cleanup event on August 29th at Applewood Baptist Church. That's another for the community to get their trash, their recyclables, and all the stuff that's kind of hanging around, and get that disposed of in a really clean way. So if you have any questions, check out our website, and thank you for this time.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Claudia Worth, and Fran Singer had their hand up, although the hand has since gone down, but Fran, if you would like to speak, you're next.
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. If you would give us your name and spell your last name and give us your address, then you may continue.
Claudia Worth, 4650 Oak Street, Wheat Ridge, Colorado. And that's W-O-R-T-H. I served 12 years on city council, so I've been in the position of the city council for many years. I voted on all kinds of rezonings, many of the statutes that you go by now. I was involved in one way or another. And I want to just remind the council, what Mr. Sarantino said is right. You represent the citizens of Wheat Ridge, not the developers, not people that own the property that they just bought, and they live in New York or other places. You represent the citizens. And while I'm, I've got this, I'd like to invite you to join the Wheat Ridge Historical Society, find out what the citizens are doing to save the history of Wheat Ridge. Come down and visit us at the society and at the bar house. The bar house is open on the second Saturday of each month, and they do special things. I don't know what they're doing for August gift. Our meetings tomorrow night, I'll find out. So, but you're welcome to come down. We're open Monday through Friday from 10 to 3:00, and with special appointment. You can also call and make a special appointment to see it. If you haven't visited, you're missing a great opportunity. Thank you. And I can do you again.
All right, Ms. Scheck.
Um, like I said, we had Fran's hand up initially. Fran, if you'd like to speak, now's your turn. If not, Guy, you're on deck, but let's just give Fran a chance. Okay, Guy?
Hey, good evening, everybody. I just, I came to speak about something else, but I just really wanted to give a shout-out to the city.
Good. Before you get going, can you give us your name and address, please?
Guy Namiach, N-A-H-M-I-A-C-H, 3650 Ward Road.
Thank you.
And so just wanted to thank you for the cleanup program. We just had a dumpster at our street, and every, all the neighbors came in and brought out all their Sony Trinitrons and all the old stuff that we had. It was a great, great event, and I do want to thank you for the 2E bond. That was a great thing for the city. Dylan and I regularly go to the new baseball field to watch all those people from Denver that come over to play baseball and take advantage of our goodwill. So, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Ms. Scheck?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't see any other blue hands in the air. Oh, I do. No, I don't. I'm sorry. I don't see any more blue hands in the air.
Okay. Is there, is there anyone on the telephone who hasn't, who would like to speak that hasn't spoken tonight? You may speak now, and I will recognize you. All right, we're coming to the end of our citizens' right to speak. This is the time when you may speak on any item not on the agenda. Is there anybody out there who has not had a chance to speak, who would like to speak? We invite you to, to speak at this time.
Mayor, we do have one more, we do have one more person in chambers that would like to speak.
Very well, let's, let's go to them then.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. My name is Odarka Figlus, F-I-G-L-U-S. My address is 10580 West 34th Avenue. And as you know, I've come here before, speaking about referendums and our right to referendum. And I'm responding to a thoughtful comment that our city clerk had made, that you are sworn to uphold the law. As I recall, I think you swear to uphold the Constitution of the United States, of the state, the charter, and the laws. So, the way I'm thinking about this is that our right to referendum is enshrined in our state constitution, is further expanded in our charter, and we depend on you, who are sworn to uphold the charter and the constitution, to protect our constitutional rights. I think, when you think about it, that's really the foremost purpose for having a city government that's representing the people, is that you protect our rights. And in this time of COVID, just saying that, oh, you can just go out and collect signatures without any guidance on how to do that safely is just not adequate. What do we do about the people that actually have COVID? Are they disenfranchised because of this horrible illness? I know you guys didn't vote this illness, and none of us want it, but we have it. What about the people that are at very high risk? There's a lot of elderly in our community, they're at very high risk. Are they automatically disenfranchised because of their high risk, or do they have to make the choice, it's a horrible choice, of exercising their rights or putting their health at risk? You know, and we, up and on, we've heard about the rights of the developer, and I was really curious about what rights a developer has to rezoning, and I looked through our code, and I finally found it. It's in Chapter 26, Section 112, Private Resonings, and it says, "All applicants are advised that there is no right to a change of zoning of property." So just please keep that in mind when you vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Scheck, do we have anyone else that, that hasn't spoken tonight, who would like to speak under citizens' right to speak?
Mayor, there's, there doesn't appear to be anyone else in chambers who would like to speak under citizens' right to speak, and I don't see any other Zoom hands up.
Okay. We have apparently got everybody in council chambers, and anyone on the Zoom format who wanted to raise their hand, that's a possibility. Anyone on the telephone or joining us in another format that I may not be familiar with, if you would like to speak under citizens' right to speak, now is your opportunity.
And Mayor, I don't see any phone numbers this evening. Everyone has a Zoom.
All right. Then I'm going to close the citizens' right to speak, and we are going to go on with our agenda, and our agenda, let's see. Item number one, Ms. Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
I will. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is Council Bill Number 11-2020, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 9800 West 38th Avenue from Residential 1 to Planned Residential Development with an outlined development plan. This is case number WZ1907/Hardy. At issue, the applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from Residential 1 to Planned Residential Development with a outlined development plan for the property located at 9800 West 38th Avenue, which is the southeast corner of West 38th Avenue and Johnson Street. The purpose of this request is to prepare the property for the dwelling, excuse me, prepare the property for the development of four single-family homes and three duplexes for a total of 10 dwelling units.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, an ordinance on second reading. It is quasi-judicial. The public hearing for this item has been opened in a previous meeting, so we are currently in the public hearing. I want to go over some procedural matters. This is a very, this case has generated a lot of interest in our community, and we want to hear from those who wish to speak on this item. You may speak only once during this public hearing, and I want to get a count on how many members of the public we have that would like to speak on this. You may speak in person at council chambers, on the Zoom format, or in telephone. Ms. Scheck, can you help me get a count on how many, how many speakers we will have on this item under our public comment section?
Thank you, Mayor. In chambers, we have 12 people signed up on the sign-in sheet. Can everyone just nod at me? Did you all sign in that wanted to on these blue sheets? No, you did not? Would you like, will you be speaking this evening? So Mayor, we'll take it back there, but I believe we'll have 13.
Okay, so we have about 13 people in the council chambers to speak on this. If you, if you are on the Zoom format and would like to speak on this item, would you please raise your hand in the Zoom format? This will be like signing in to speak, and Ms. Scheck will get a count on how many of those are.
I see six hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, so we have 13 people in council chambers and six hands in, on the Zoom format. Is there anyone else wishing to speak from the public who would be speaking by telephone? If you do, please unmute yourself and let us get you signed in to speak at this time. Okay, I don't have any more people signed up to speak, so it sounds like we have 19, 19 members of the public who wish to speak on this item. I don't think that's a, a large enough number to limit, limit the time for speaking on this item, so we will not, we will not limit public comment to three minutes, and so, that will sort of get us going on that. This is a quasi-judicial matter, which requires you to take an oath that you affirm to tell you, to tell the truth as you understand it in this matter. So by speaking in this public forum, you agree to tell the truth as you understand it in this matter. So that will get our procedural items out of the way. I would now like to go to our staff report, and Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Scott Cutler with our Community Development Department will be providing the staff presentation this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Cutler, please, please proceed.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to be playing two applicant, two videos tonight. One is the staff presentation, and then one is the applicant's presentation. I'll kind of interrupt those with some comment, and then turn it back over to you all. So let me share my screen, and I will play my staff presentation. Thanks.
Okay, and one more housekeeping item. If you are not speaking at this time, would you please mute your device?
All right, I'm playing my video now. Hello, my name is Scott Cutler, and I'm a planner with the City of Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. I'm presenting case number WZ1907, which is a request for approval of a zone change from Residential 1 to Planned Residential Development with an outlined development plan. I'd like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, the comprehensive plan, and this judicial presentation. The properties within the city of Wheat Ridge, all appropriate notification and posting requirements have been met, and therefore, City Council has jurisdiction to hear this This is a 2018 aerial view of the property. The property is outlined in red. It's approximately 1.28 acres. It's currently vacant, and it's just a block east from the Kipling corridor. The surrounding area is a mix of uses, duplexes to the east and north, single-family to the south, commercial to the west, and a park to the southwest. This is a topographic view of the property, showing the existing conditions. It is fairly steeply sloping from northeast to the southwest, and as shown before, the property gets narrower closer to jump. The closest- The close lines you see at the south of the property is the drainage way. The property is significantly lower than the Iris Court Development to the east, which is held up by a retaining wall. The topography and shape result in some design constraints, which I will describe in more detail later. This is a zoning map of the area. The site is Zoned R1, Residential 1, as are properties to the south. Properties to the north are Zoned R2. The duplex development to the east is Zoned R2A. Commercial zoning is along the Kipling Corridor with some mixed-use zoning further north and west on Kipling Street and 38th Avenue. Before I get into the specifics of the applicant's proposal, I want to quickly go over the purpose of a planned development. The next three slides are directly from the municipal code and describe in detail what a planned development is and why a property owner would pursue one. The intent of the Planned Development District is to permit the establishment of well-designed innovative developments, which may not be feasible under standard zone district, which may be permitted through the use of an approved development plan by ensuring greater control and specificity of intended development, character, use, operations and maintenance, while at the same time allowing flexibility and diversity. This slide is from Chapter 26-301C of the City Code, which explains why a planned development is needed. Properties over one acre must be rezoned to planned developments as they are not eligible for other residential zone districts. An applicant may not subdivide a property to reduce it under the one-acre threshold and then change the zoning. So the planned development is the only option in this case. Planned developments are also needed to accomplish transitional land uses and buffering from surrounding areas, remove flexibility in design and location of buildings, and to accommodate unique designs and properties, including slope, shape and location. The Outline Development Plan establishes the PRD zoning requirements. In this case, the applicant is proposing to develop the site with 10 dwelling units with three duplexes and four single-family homes. The request tonight is for a rezone from R1 to Planned Residential Development. The Outline Development Plan accompanies the zone change request by establishing the zoning and development standards and is the first step in the planned development process. The code allows for processing ODPs and SDPs, specific development plans, either concurrently or sequentially. The applicant has chosen the sequential two-step option. I'll go through the ODP document and then talk about the criteria for review and staff findings. The ODP is two sheets in this case, which are found in the staff report. The first page has dedicated signature blocks, legal descriptions and a description of the development. The second sheet, shown here, contains the development standards and the proposed layout, which I'll show in more detail in a minute. This table summarizes the development standards that are proposed on Sheet 2 of the ODP. For permitted uses, the applicant has proposed duplexes and single-family primary uses. No accessory buildings or RV parking will be allowed, which is not the case in standard zone districts. For architecture, the city does not have design standards for duplexes or single-family homes in standard zone districts. However, the applicant has proposed self-imposed standards, which include an aggregated 30% masonry requirement on front elevations, varying elevations so all units are not identical, and alley-loaded garages. For building height, the proposed maximum height of 28 feet for single-family homes and 25 to 30 feet for the duplexes is several feet lower than the R1 maximum of 35 feet. 10 units are proposed, four single-family homes and three duplexes. This is more than the R1 zoning would allow, but is comparable with the Iris Court Development to the east and is far below the citywide 21 units per acre maximum at approximately 7.8 units per acre. Setbacks proposed are 20 feet in the front along 38th Avenue, 20 for the perimeter setbacks, including the sides, east side and rear, south side, and then interior setbacks would be seven and a half feet for the single-family homes. City Code requires each lot to be 25% landscaped, including 100% of the front yard, not counting driveways or sidewalk. The ODP also has this requirement, but an additional 11% of the site is dedicated as an unbuildable tract for open space and for drainage. Lastly, parking. Each unit is required by the ODP to have a two-car garage and there will be a total of four spaces per dwelling unit provided. Two on-street spaces will also be created on Johnson Street. This meets the city standard for single-family and duplexes and is the same as the R1 standard of four spaces per dwelling unit. This is the conceptual site plan from Page 2 of the ODP with annotations. The ODP requires a conceptual site plan and gives a sense of the proposed layout and how that land use will transition and relate it to existing conditions. The duplexes will be located along 38th Avenue with front yards. An alley bisects the site and accesses the single-family garages on the south side. There is additional parking on the west side, but as stated earlier, each unit will have a two-car garage and most will have parking for two vehicles in the driveway. The open space and drainage tract is located along the southern property line near the additional parking. On-street parking will be provided on Johnson Street with curb gutter and sidewalk added to improve this drainage, as required by City Code. The site was subject to a different zone change application by a different owner two years ago, which had six more units and all were duplexes. This site plan is more consistent with the surrounding zoning and has evolved based on feedback from the neighborhood and during the neighborhood meeting. This is a view of the open space tract, which does not include the guest parking spaces, shown here in green. It takes up approximately 11% of the total site. The primary reason for this tract is to allow the drainage way to flow unobstructed without being an individual property owner's responsibility to maintain. The proposed underground detention pond would also be located in this area on the west side. The tract would act as a landscape buffer between the site and the neighborhood to the south, as nothing could be built in this area. This is a view of the open space tract, plus unbuildable areas that are within the required setbacks for the various buildings. The white green you see here will act as unbuildable open space for each property. Please note that the open space will actually be even larger, since most buildings, especially the single-family homes, won't be able to take up all the white space shown in each lot. Each lot is required to be at least 25% landscaped, which will limit the overall building footprint. For example, the yard for the house in the southeast corner will actually be much larger. Only the open space within the required setbacks or the open space tract is shown here. These are schematics of how the proposed buildings would sit on the site. As mentioned earlier, the houses would not take up the entire white space in the diagram shown in the previous slide. As you can see, each duplex will have a landscaped front yard in the building, uh, between the building and the 38th Avenue sidewalk. The single-family homes will have backyards of varying sizes in addition to the landscaped area to the south. This diagram shows the uses proposed by the ODP in relation to the surrounding uses. You can see that it is adjacent to multiple duplex lots already to the east and north. The single-family portion of the site orders the single-family to the south, although they will be on smaller lots. Discovery Park is located to the southwest. The Kipling Corridor is commercial in nature with Apple Ridge Cafe, gas stations, Starbucks, Sprouts and so on. Just off this map to the west are two redevelopment sites. Four duplexes will be located next to the dentist office on 38th Avenue and next to the Starbucks will be a new multi-tenant commercial building. These projects have both been recently approved. The site is also within walking distance from a school, just off the screen to the north. We use several criteria to evaluate zone change requests, which includes consistency with the comprehensive plan. Full analysis of the criteria for consideration of the zone change are provided in the staff report and I'll go into more detail on those later. This image is an excerpt from the comprehensive plan, which provides guidance in terms of land use. The property is shown and is located in the yellow neighborhood area. You can see that it is within a block of the Kipling Corridor that is a primary, uh, primary commercial corridor with mixed-use commercial and a community commercial center. The neighborhood designation encourages improvement of underutilized properties. The proposed zone change is consistent with the neighborhood designation and supports the city's stated goals of increasing options for homeownership and attracting a range of household types. Large portions of the city designated as neighborhood contain duplexes and this application is found to be in full compliance with the comprehensive plan in terms of density. It acts as a transition from the higher-intensity Kipling Corridor and on the west to the duplexes and single-family neighborhoods in the area. City Council is compelled to review zone changes against the criteria found in the City Code. These criteria are found in Section 26-303D and all zone changes for planned developments must comply with these criteria. It must not have an adverse effect on the surrounding area. The development cannot be feasible under another zone district due to waivers or variances required. Adequate infrastructure must be available or can be installed at the developer's expense and the zone change is in conformance with the city's comprehensive plan goals, policies and objectives. As a requirement of the zone change process, a neighborhood meeting was held on October 3rd, 2019 at City Hall. 18 people attended the meeting and the notes from the meeting are included in the staff report. Since Wheat Ridge is not a full-service city, we sent the application on referral to outside agencies, including fire, water and sanitation, as well as completed an internal review. We did not receive concerns or objections from any outside agencies or departments. On February 6th, 2020, Planning Commission reviewed this request and recommended approval. The City Council hearing was originally scheduled for April 13th, 2020, but due to multiple factors, including the need to move hearings to a virtual capacity and due to valid legal protests, is now being heard on July 13th. Before the hearing, the property was posted for 15 days and letters were sent to property owners within a 300-foot radius. Comments collected on Wheat Ridge Speaks will be reviewed by the City Council and entered into the public record as official public comment. Comments received online through July 2nd are also available to view on the Wheat Ridge Speaks website and are included in the council packet. That believes the zone change request meets the criteria. It allows for a compatible and transitional land use, complies with the comprehensive plan and it provides opportunity for reinvestment. The area has long included a mix of housing types. This project will add to the diversity of the area. Ultimately, staff is recommending approval of the request. The City Council approves the ODP, the zone change is approved, the applicant can move forward with a specific development plan and plan. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cutler. Before we go to questions from council, uh, I would like to open, to invite the public to speak on this matter.
Mr. Mayor, I think.
Mr. Mayor.
I think Mr. Cutler has one more presentation.
Oh, he has another presentation. I'm sorry.
There's a, from the applicant as well.
Okay.
And before I play that video, I would like to remind council that because there is a valid legal protest, that will require a supermajority to approve this request this evening. So let me go ahead and play the applicant's video. Let me just one second.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christine Simcox. I'm an architect with the design team working on the site plan and dwelling unit designs for the property at 9800 West 38th Avenue in Wheat Ridge, Colorado. I'd like to introduce you to Ardalon and Kim Hardy. They are the owners of this property. Ardalon and Kim have been Wheat Ridge residents and have operated local businesses for many years. Their children attended Prospect Valley Elementary School, Everett Middle School and are graduates of Wheat Ridge High School. Ardalon and Kim currently live at 10240 West 34th Place. They are excited for the opportunity to develop a beautiful community at their property at West 38th Avenue and Johnson Street. Ardalon and Kim hope to relocate to one of the single-family homes on this property. This property is located on West 38th Avenue and Johnson Street, east of Kipling. The property is 1.2729 acres in size and slopes down to the south and west corner of the property. This planned community will enhance an unused site and provide a variety of dwelling unit types. We have presented property and building information for this project at a neighborhood meeting in November of 2019 and at the City of Wheat Ridge's Planning Commission hearing on February 6th, 2020. After each of these meetings, we as a design team have relooked at the project so that we can best respond to the comments and concerns from both city officials and members of the community. While presenting information about this project, we would like to give as much information as possible about access and egress to the community, parking for the community and grading and water detention for the property. There are several different types of developments that surround this property. This photo is taken on the east side of the property facing north and west towards the gas station at the corner of Kipling and West 38th Avenue. This photo is taken on the east side of the property facing north across West 38th Avenue. There are existing single-family and duplex homes that are accessed directly from West 38th Avenue. These homes sit across the street from the proposed duplex units on this property. This is a photo of the duplex units directly to the east of the property. We were asked during the hearing with the Planning Commission about the relationship between the proposed duplexes and single-family homes on this property and the existing duplex units to the east. We wanted to include this photo to show that the existing duplex homes are set higher up the hill than the new duplexes. There is an existing retaining wall between the two properties. This photo shows the existing single-family residential development to the south of the property with existing accessory sheds and vehicle storage. This photo shows the undeveloped land to the west of the property in the Apple Ridge Cafe. You can also see other businesses on the west side of Kipling beyond, which include Sprouts, Starbucks and another gas station. And here we are back at the gas station to the north and west of the property. We also wanted to show you some projects that are currently being constructed in Wheat Ridge within two miles of this property. There have been some concerns about the heights of the dwelling units on this property and we wanted to show other developments being built in this area that are next to existing neighborhoods. This slide shows photos of three and four-story condominium units. This is a photo next to the former Lucky's on West 38th Avenue in Wadsworth. It is four stories in height. And this slide shows townhome units in a development named West Ridge Row Homes, located at 44th and Yarrow. The new buildings are three stories in height. We are proposing a development that will have four single-family houses on the south side of the property and three duplex buildings on the north side of the property along West 38th Avenue. The density for the project is 37% less than what is allowable by the City of Wheat Ridge. These 10 new dwelling units will be accessed from a new alley, which will be entered from West 38th Avenue and from Johnson Street. Although the ODP has defined the road as an alley, we would prefer to call this road a private road. This road will have signage to set guidelines for private parking on the property and will set an appropriate speed limit for cars traveling on the private road. This preliminary grading plan has been produced by Nathan Lottick, the civil engineer for this project. The elevation drawings I will present have been adapted to show this grading in relationship to the homes. Nathan has designed the private drive so that the slope of the drive at the entrance to West 38th Avenue will not exceed 10%. We believe that this portion of the road will have excellent southern exposure with its slope and distance from the buildings. This grading plan shows the limits of the underground detention area, which is located under the additional four parking spaces. Each dwelling unit will have a two-car garage. All lots except lots five and 10 will have a minimum of two additional parking spaces in their driveways. The community will have four onsite parking spaces in the southwest corner of the property. Johnson Street to the west of the property will be widened to accommodate two additional parking spaces. This will provide a total of 40 parking spaces for the community. The amount of parking provided for this community exceeds the minimum requirement by the City of Wheat Ridge. The single-family house on Lot 1 has been changed since our last hearing in February. The rear deck has been removed and the house size has been changed so that this lot can also accommodate a driveway to provide two additional parking spaces for the community. This site plan is conceptual, but shows the proposed dwelling units on the property. The four units at the south side of the property The four units at the south side of the property are single-family homes with two-car garages, covered front porches, and most have decks off the back. Six duplex units will be located on the north side of the property along West 38th Avenue, and will each have two-car garages, covered front decks, and decks that face the private road. I will be showing some conceptual drawings of each dwelling unit later in this presentation. The landscape design shown on this plan is also conceptual and shows that we intend for this development to be well detailed with well-thought-out landscaping between the duplex units and West 38th Avenue and between the single-family homes and the existing development to the south of the property. These are conceptual designs of the front and rear elevations of a typical single-family home. These homes will be approximately 2,200 to 2,400 square feet in size and will have three bedrooms and three baths. The single-family homes will have a maximum height of 28 feet, as defined by the City of Wheat Ridge. These maximum heights to the midpoint of the roof. The single-family homes will have a variety of architectural styles, building materials, and roof lines. We want the buildings in this community to feel cohesive but not look exactly the same. Adjacent structures will not have the same detailed elevations. All front elevations and sides facing the public right-of-ways or open space will be finished with a minimum of 30% of masonry materials. I'm showing these elevations with brick and siding and another elevation with synthetic stone and a stucco finish. These roofs will vary with hip and gabled roofs. This is a conceptual design of the duplex units as they face West 38th Avenue on the north and the private road on the south. These dwelling units will be oriented towards West 38th Avenue and will have a strong front entry design with covered decks. These decks will have the same architectural treatment as the facade. Maximum height of 30 feet. These units will be about 1,700 square feet of finished space and have three bedrooms and three baths. The four duplex units will be L-shaped and be one story above a garage accessed by the private road. They will have a maximum height of 25 feet. These units will be about 500 square feet of finished space on the lower level and 1,500 square feet of finished space on the main level. They will also be three bedrooms and three-bath homes. As with the single-family homes, the duplex units will have a variety of architectural styles, building materials, and roof. Our elevations and sides facing the public right-of-ways or open space will be finished with a minimum of 30% of masonry materials. I'm showing the units with brick and siding. With the same materials. The roofs will vary between hip and gabled roofs. We plan to create an attractive and well-detailed transitional community. This community will allow buffering between residential and commercial properties. We are very willing to work with city officials and community members to make this community one we can all be proud of. On behalf of Ardalon and Kim Hardy, I thank you for your time and consideration of this outlined development plan.
Thanks. That concludes the applicant's presentation. They are also available on this call if you have any questions for them.
Okay, thank you very much. My apologies for not getting that earlier. Okay, so before we go to questions from council, I would like to invite the public to speak on this. Ms. Shek, do we... Let's start with the speakers in council chambers, if you would, to bring them in and introduce them or bring them to the podium. And when you're at the podium, if you'd please introduce yourself. Give us your first name and your last name. Spell your last name. And give us your street address, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. First up is Carol Matthews with Lynn Martinelli on deck. And I just wanted to point out to all the speakers in chambers that if you can just see the camera where I'm pointing up here on the wall and Mary Ann's pointing. We did say that we're your air stewards tonight, right? Please look into that. If you look at that, council will be reading your face. You can also see council on the screens, but that's the camera that's picking you up. Does that make sense? Okay, great. Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Carol Matthews, 3851 Hoyt Street, Wheat Ridge, 80033. Matthews is M-A-T-H-E-W-S. In 2018 through 2019, and the City of Wheat Ridge sponsored the Neighborhood Revitalization Study. CZB was hired to conduct the study and recommend a plan for moving the city forward. I was one of the 26 citizens who worked with CZB on this study. We held meetings and focus groups and reached out to the Wheat Ridge community. The citizens of Wheat Ridge seem to agree that Wheat Ridge is a unique and special place to live and that they want to celebrate and preserve the quirky character of Wheat Ridge. Neighborhoods are what make the character of Wheat Ridge. We are not a cookie-cutter community like our surrounding cities. We are a living, breathing community of individuals, of diversity, and of neighbors. We heard the citizens could accept and celebrate improvements along Wadsworth, Kipling, and Youngsfield, but they wanted to be a part of any change in their neighborhoods and that high density is not appropriate in most neighborhoods in Wheat Ridge. Residential zoning is the guarantee made on the neighborhood when one purchases a home or lot in the community. CZB said to move Wheat Ridge forward and to increase the commercial amenities, we needed to attract more strong households and to build community trust. To accomplish this, Wheat Ridge must honor the neighborhood zoning guarantees. Following the recommendations of NRS study, City Council just approved and launched a neighborhood engagement program to be up and running in midsummer. Mr. Stites wisely inquired about what should be considered in that interim. A zoning change moratorium was in the mix. A denial of this rezoning at 9800 West 38th would assure the Wheat Ridge community of the validity of the neighborhood engagement effort. This development plan was defeated by the last City Council because of the density and lack of parking accommodations, and most importantly, because it was not appropriate for the neighborhood. The new developer bought this property with the knowledge that it was an R1 zoning, and that should stand. Eight neighbors have filed protest letters. Over 6,000 Wheat Ridge citizens voted against a residential zone change to PRD in the last election. The neighboring duplex that the city staff is using for comparison have yards, setbacks, and a cul-de-sac street for overflow parking. Their height and architecture design are compatible with the designs of the single-family neighborhood. The 9800 development is adjacent to spacious single-family homes and our beautiful new Discovery Park. This density and height would stifle the aesthetics of the entire area, despite the... disrupt the serenity of the park and would be a blight to the neighborhood and the entire community who now enjoy the breathing space of this majestic park. Please engage this neighborhood and with the six... and also the 6,000 Wheat Ridge citizens who voted against residential zoning being changed to PRD. Vote no on this PRD zone change. Engage our community.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Mayor, this is Lynn Martinelli and Delain or Delaney Novak on deck.
Good evening. My name's Lynn Martinelli, 4240 Uppam. Martinelli is M-A-R-T-I-N-E-L-L-I. And I was part of the zone change disruption last November that was turned down. And I would like to say the same thing about this. This one on 38th and Johnson. It shouldn't be changed from R1. And if I might, I might... Could I read a statement for another longtime Wheat Ridge resident that was unable to come because of health reasons?
Yes, ma'am.
This is from Thomas Slattery, S-L-A-T-T-E-R-Y, 6869 West 32nd Avenue. "I am opposed to the proposed rezoning of the property at 9800 West 38th Avenue from R1 to PRD. The PRD zone would allow development at a much higher density than is permitted on the R1 zone. The attempt to neighborhood bust on Uppam Street was defeated at referendum by more than a 60% vote. This unofficial trend to redevelop the city to high density needs to stop. I request that this council reject this proposal, and I do agree with everything he said." Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shek, our next speaker.
We have Delain Novak, followed by Margaret Nelson on deck.
Hi, my name is Delain Novak, N-O-V-A-K. I live at 9795 West 38th, directly across the street from the proposed development. So I'm going to bring up the parking issue. Okay. We saw on the slides that the duplex across the street, there were several cars parked out in front. There is not enough parking. There is no on-street parking for any of the people that live on the north side of West 38th, including myself. Up until last year, I used my garage as a storage unit. And then I finally, you know, with having a backyard, I was able to get a tough shed. Okay, so that kind of cleared out my garage for me to park inside of it. And still, over Mother's Day, I have three children. Still, one of them had to park off-street on Johnson Street. So I saw the picture of the smiling family of the developer, and they looked like they had like five kids. And still, when Thanksgiving comes around or Mother's or Father's Day comes around, they're going to have to find parking elsewhere, you know, and just consider that for all the other residents. But I'm here to oppose it. I was one of the people that voted last November, you know, against rezoning. So that's all I have to say is I'm personally, you know, I'll be affected by this because of parking issues and therefore the lack of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, Mayor, we have Margaret Nelson with Ihor Figlis on deck.
Hi, thanks. Margaret Nelson, 9865 West 37th Avenue. It's N-E-L-S-O-N. I've spoken many times. I'm sure you're all familiar with what I have to say. If you've read the Wheat Ridge Speaks, and if you haven't, shame on you. I really think this PRD zoning is unnecessary and inappropriate to develop this property. Of course, I was thinking you could do it as an R2, and that really arbitrary rule about, oh, it's a little over an acre, so we can't do that. That just seems so arbitrary, and it seems like... Maybe I'm wrong, but it sure seems like that's something that was just pushed through to try to push this PRD zoning onto people. Anyway, the neighbors don't want it. The Wheat Ridge citizens don't want this kind of development. As has been stated, you know, the developer knew the zoning when he purchased the property. He could develop it as an R1. If he chooses not to, you know, what can you say, you know? I mean, I don't think you should just keep trying to push this PRD zoning onto neighborhoods that have no interest in it, vehemently do not want it. There are other options, and I hope you'll consider other options before you do that. You could have a variance, for example, of the R2 thing and develop as an R2. I doubt that many people here would be fighting you over that. But this PRD, I've seen and experienced firsthand how such high-density zoning can and will destroy neighborhoods, destroy the surrounding neighborhoods by pushing out and pushing through. And every house that goes up for sale will be bought by somebody who'll sit on it for a couple of years and then scrape it and put up, you know, horrific things. So I'm trying to stop that for my new neighborhood. I'm very happy here. You can't do to me what my old one did because I've got space around me. But I'm, you know, it's not just about me. It's about the whole neighborhood and the entire city of Wheat Ridge and how you want it to look and how you want it to feel in the years to come. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mayor, we have Ihor Figlis with Vivian Voss on deck.
Good evening. My name is Ihor Figlis, F-I-G-L-U-S. I live at 9775 West 36th Avenue. This... You'll have to bear with me. I've got a couple of images that I'll attempt to show. Not too many, but a few. I think we got it worked out. This rezoning should not be approved by the City Council because it does not fit the character of our neighborhood. I live two blocks away from there. It is much denser than the surrounding neighborhood, and it will be detrimental to our neighborhood. I would like to remind the members of City Council that both the last election and the NRS showed that Wheat Ridge citizens overwhelmingly do not want increased density in our residential neighborhoods. If the City Council is truly representative of the citizens of Wheat Ridge, then approximately 2/3 of you should vote against this rezoning to increase density. I would like to mention that it's interesting to note that nearly all comments in favor, in support of the application, are by people who do not live in Wheat Ridge. Some live as far away as Aurora, but yet they feel empowered to declare what Wheat Ridge should be like. There are several problems with the applicants... with the application and the city planning department's presentations. The biggest problem is that this request for rezoning is accompanied by only an outlined development plan, an ODP, which has a disclaimer right in the middle of it that this outlined development plan is conceptual in nature. It goes on to say, "Specific development elements such as site layout and building architecture have not been addressed in this document." The presentation that you saw, the video presentation, has nothing to do with the application. This document is the application, and these issues are not addressed in the document. "A specific development plan must be submitted prior to any site development." This means that all the nice words and drawings presented earlier are just words and drawings for the purposes of obtaining a rezoning and do not commit the developer of this property to anything other than having 10 units. As mentioned, the rezoning application process allows the developer to submit both the ODP and the SPT simultaneously, but the developer chose not to do so. The potential result of not doing an SDP at the same time as the ODP can be illustrated by what happened to the development at 44th and Yarrow. Instead of the planned, the announced triplexes, we now have fourplexes and sixplexes that look like this. A further example of the problem without having the site development plan, specific development plan, is a development next to Lucky's, which originally was touted as being 23 patio homes, but instead we have the apartment blocks that you saw earlier. This proposal is viewed with much suspicion by the neighborhood residents because the engineer who designed this ODP had previously tried to develop the same property with 23 units. To us, this is an indication that the developer's motive for profiting is for profiting from our neighborhood more so than maintaining its character and integrity. Despite the claim by city staff that the density of this development is 7.8 units per acre, the fact is that about 0.3 acres is devoted to an alley. The result... And the result is that 10 units are to be constructed on one acre, which is a density of 10 units per acre. The Iris Court duplex next door has a density of six units per acre, and the surrounding R1 neighborhood has an average density of only 2.5 units per acre. That's a lot less than 10 units per acre. So this view could very well be... end up being what we eventually will have constructed in our neighborhood, where neighboring houses look like this. On another note, more than one-half of the claimed open space area is drainage, is a drainage ditch, as you can see here. drainage ditch, as you can see here. And as for the landscaped open space proposed here, this plan is not binding. And we could very well end up with this because there is no SDP submitted at this time. In addition, I would like to point out that several of these buildings cannot be legally constructed on this property. The Wheat Ridge City Code states in Section 26-412, Part 8, Item 3, that private streets shall not be allowed. I think you heard that mentioned in the presentation today, that this was going to be a private street. But it's officially called an alley, which is not a street. In Section 26-404, an alley is defined as a right-of-way dedicated to public uses which gives a primary or secondary means of vehicular access to the rear or side of properties that otherwise abut a street. The alley shown in the ODP provides primary vehicular access to all 10 units. However, the four single-family units do not abut any street, as shown here. Part B, Item 1 of that section, states that for residential subdivisions, all lots shall have frontage on a public street with the exception of those lots served by a private drive, and private drives shall be designated by recorded easement and shall provide access to no more than four dwelling units. This alley ends up being a private drive, which is prohibited because it provides access to 10 units. Therefore, these four single-family units are illegal and cannot be allowed, and this rezoning application must be rejected, just as it was rejected by City Council in 2018. Thank you. Sorry, one more, I forgot, one more thing. I have five more letters, legal protests from neighbors surrounding the area, which I will leave for the city clerk to put into the record. Thank you.
Ms. Scheck.
Thank you, Mayor. Next up, we have Vivian Voss, and on deck, we have Patricia Wolf.
Good evening. Vivian Voss, that's V-O-S, one S, 6920 West 47th Place. A couple of council meetings ago, there was talk on how Wheat Ridge Speaks comments would be in the minutes, and I've read a couple of minutes lately. It seems that they are in there. But we also talked about how City Council would attest to the fact that they actually did read these and that we can't assume that they all did. So if somewhere tonight, now, whenever, we could get some kind of an answer as to whether council members are individually attesting to the fact that they have read these Wheat Ridge Speaks, comments or not would be great. I didn't hear anything in tonight's opening oath otherwise. Let me hit also, from a different angle, on this density that we're talking about on this proposed development. The, a Forbes article dated June 17th of 2020, headline is "Demand for Homes Surges as Buyers Head for the Single Family Suburbs." Rising move towards single-family housing. A 33% uptick in saved, single-family property searches from February to May. That's also up 28% over the year and the largest share of searches on the site. Other types of properties like condos, townhouses, and multifamily homes are actually seeing declining interest, actually hitting a three-year low. Families have found themselves stuck at home, working remotely, and in need of additional space. They're on the hunt for more space lot-wise. Suburban migration happens annually, but this year it's been more pronounced, and mostly we can contribute that to the virus, and we don't know when the virus is going to stop, and everybody's still living in fear. The real estate section of the Denver Post dated, I believe, this Sunday, given by a Realtor, well, it's an article on the home, called "On the Home Front." It's absolutely pandemonium for buyers. "I can't stay in an apartment one more day. We're doing better than expected because people are upsizing, getting out of apartments, wanting more space. They are pushed over the edge by the pandemic. They're working from home, and companies are showing more flexibility, and a lot of times there's two people working from home, and they're homeschooling, and they need more land, open space, and a view." So I would say that this is a turning point for how we view housing in any city, and let's be specific about Wheat Ridge. We don't need density. The two properties that were spoken about on the applicant's presentation, the Corners is in a commercial district, hardly neighborhood, and the West End 38th is also commercial, right on 38th. So those two can be allowed the density that they are based on where they are, as opposed to a neighborhood there at 9800 West 38th Avenue. Current zoning does allow for development of three single-family houses. I do not oppose development on this site, but I do oppose the proposed density. And I do hope that you remember, maybe not all of you on council, but a lot of times the rezoning has been voted and passed, and then we see two or three developers, landowners, after the rezoning, then they change what they had presented to council and the citizens, and it becomes a, oh, my gee, what just happened? That's not what we had heard. That's not what we were presented in council through the plans. And I think we're kind of at the point of really not trusting developers so much anymore, planners, people that own property that want to rezone. We just can't trust them that much, that they'll do what they say they're going to do at the time they present it to us, which speaks to the outline plan, ODP, presented only tonight. I would suggest that council not vote at all on this. Continue it down until you do get the SDP along with the ODP. I know they can present it at the same time, and I would suggest that you move forward with that thought, and also honor the citizens who must live around these areas and navigate 38th Avenue on snow days and lack of ice melt. I can't say anything more than negative about this whole development, 9800 West 38th. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, we have Patricia Wolf, and we have Alan Wolf on deck.
Hello. I'm Patricia Wolf, W-U-L-F, 9745 West 35th Avenue, very close to the property in question. Well, I've looked at the diagram that we saw, looked at the figures with my reading glasses, way too crowded. Trying to fit 10 units on a property that can hold only three units is a bad idea. Traffic congestion would be a major consequence of this proposal. The problem is that the plan up on the website, that may not be the plan that is executed if the current R1 zoning is changed to the PRD zoning. Once PRD zoning is in place, the developers can change the plan significantly. We have only to look to Wadsworth Boulevard, where we find a huge complex of high-rise The original plan was a concept-only or an outlined development plan. For me, it's easy to see that the issue here is trust. The citizens need a specific development plan that does not change after it's approved in order to rectify the trust deficit. That said, I stand opposed to the rezoning of the property at West 38th Avenue and Johnson Street.
Thank you.
Next, Mayor, we have Alan Wolf with Raleigh Sorrentino on deck.
My address is 9745 West 35th Avenue, Wheat Ridge. I am opposed to the open-ended plan now being considered by the council for the development of 38th and Johnson Street. The lots in our neighborhood are larger than most in the inner city, and most of us like it that way. I want it to stay that way. If I wanted to live in a row house on a lot with 50-foot of frontage, I would move. Therefore, I am opposed to the council bringing that kind of development to my neighborhood. If 9800 West 38th Avenue is built according to the current scheme called PRD zoning, what is to stop the council from allowing that to happen on all the large lots south of 38th and Johnson? We've all seen the disaster of the high-rise just south of the former Lucky store on Wadsworth. Driving by, it looks like there must be all of six-foot separating the east face of that building from Wadsworth. I guess you would have to call that infilling to the extreme. Thank you for your time.
And next, Mayor, we have Raleigh Sorrentino with Lola Tapia Ling on deck. I'm sorry, Mayor, one second. Mr. Sorrentino would prefer that his relative speak first?
She could go before me.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. And Mayor, we have Joanne Sorrentino, followed by Raleigh Sorrentino. And then Lola, you'll be, you'll be third. So Joanne, Raleigh, and Lola, sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Joanne Sorrentino. I live at 4175 Teller Street, 80033. Last name S-O-R-R-E-N-T-I-N-O. This rezoning is almost getting to be humorous. We, it failed a year ago for obvious reasons. The contractor wasn't happy with just 25 units. He wanted to make 38. Changing from R1 to PRD gives the developer a cart blank to do whatever he wants. And as we can see here, it isn't set in stone, but once he gets the contract, he can do whatever he wants. His development is not to make a pleasant home or even a duplex livable for the people in that neighborhood. It's for profit, and that is the only thing that we can see out of this. I am amazed that the City Council continues to want to change R1s to PRD. We are living with two monstrosities that are on 38th, on Uppam and 38th and Wadsworth, and this has to stop. I drove by 44th and Yarrow, and the number of units that are being put up there, there's no yard, there's no parking, there's no street. This kind of development needs to stop, and I think the City Council needs to look at what changing R1 to PRD becomes for the city of Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
And next, we have Raleigh Sorrentino, followed by Lola Tapia Ling.
Good evening again. Thank you. Raleigh Sorrentino, S-O-R-R-E-N-T-I-N-O, 4175 Teller Street. Well, earlier tonight, I had a prepared statement. I always want to try and speak extemporaneously on this, on an observation. I grew up in this neighborhood. I went to high school Wheat Ridge in the early '60s. A lot of my classmates lived in those houses right there, south of 38th and east of Johnson, and I used to play there and visit guys and girls through high school there, in some cases even after, I guess. But in a macroscopic view, that I look at that, and I said, that was always a nice neighborhood, single-family R1 houses, just single-family houses there on properties. And all of that area, south of 38th and east of Johnson, was family homes. And it just seems wrong to change that. R1 has been there for a reason, and a good reason, and the people that live there can tell you that. And to change that zoning to PRD for the purpose of putting in this high density just simply changes the character of that whole neighborhood. It just simply doesn't belong there. There's nothing the matter with single-family housing on that property, even if it's a little tighter, maybe three houses. But it's just, it's just wrong to move forward with that high density at that location in an R1 district of Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
And next, Mayor, we have Lola Tapia Lang, or Lange. And Lola, I'm so sorry for what I'm doing to your name, followed by Harry Hanley on deck.
Good evening. My name is Lola Tapia Lange, T-T-O-M-A-S-A-P-I-L-A-N-G-E. I've been living in Wheat Ridge for 34 years, and I, we, my husband and myself, we fought all these parks that we finally managed to get because they wanted to develop all kind of commercial things. That was the Discovery Park. And I can see the density of the population and the car. We will end up eating the car because it's impossible to keep developing more and more. And I oppose completely to this developer. Thank you.
And next, we have Harry Hanley, I'm sorry, Harry Hanley, followed by Odarka Figlis.
My name is Harry Hanley from 4190 Dover Street, and I've lived here in this neighborhood now for not as long as some of the others that have stood here, but in excess of 30 years. And I spent my entire, or close to my entire career, visiting home sites, literally thousands of homes here in Wheat Ridge, and have had numerous in-depth conversations with the people who live in these homes. And it is very clear to them, and to all of the others who live here in this community, that they came to live here and made a considerable investment to live here in an R1 community and buy a home here because they wanted to continue to be with this, with the character of this neighborhood. And the voters and all of the people who And the voters and all of the people who spoke very, very clearly, who came up here and did a lot of research to show the council that, in fact, the community is clear about why they live here, and they're clear about why they're coming up here to speak to you, and they were clear about making the vote. Considerable number of people voted to stop the exercise of changing an R1 district or an R1 property into a multifamily property, which could go in any direction, as was pointed out by the many people that came up to speak with you today. So I certainly hope, and I won't tire you, you've certainly heard, and an incredible number of people, I won't say an inordinate number of people because maybe there should be 6,000 people lined up here to speak to you, but we beg you to be cognizant of the minds of the people who have come to live here and invest their money and plan their lives and their families in this community. Don't change this community from an R1 community, and don't change the property in question here from an R1 property. Keep it an R1 property so that the neighborhood can stay the same, the parking could not be a problem, the traffic won't be a problem, and all the other issues that were presented to you today. Thank you for the time to speak with you, and I certainly hope that it's clear that the people who have come here today know exactly what they're trying to accomplish by speaking with you. Thank you for the time.
We now have Odarka Figlus, and that's the last person I have signed up to speak in chambers. So we'll go to Guy on Zoom, following Odarka. Thank you.
Thank you. Odarka Figlus, F-I-G-L-U-S, 10580 West 34th Avenue. You know, one of the things, as I was reading through the materials and listening to the presentations, I have to wonder, this project's so great, why aren't the application and all the supporting materials and presentations more straightforward, complete, and honest? For example, description of the neighborhood. In the applicant's video, we were shown pictures of the surrounding uses. Developer even made time in the presentations to give us two shots of that gas station on the corner, but they neglected to mention the property directly across the street, directly across for most of their frontage. That is a property on a wooded 1.1 acre, which is only slightly smaller than the applicant's. It has one single-family home. Or what about the McDougal's property, horse property to the south and east, with a single-family home on more than 0.8 acres? There's another property to the south. It's a single-family on half an acre. And then there's Margaret Nelson's lovely, single-family home.
We have some, thank you. Please continue.
And then there's Margaret Nelson's lovely, single-family home on more than half an acre, directly to the south. They show only the back of her shed and then falsely claim that there is vehicle storage. We hear about developments well to the other side of Kipling, which are not part of the neighborhood. Let me describe what is part of the neighborhood. East of the property that they did describe is all single-family residential, well-maintained houses, many on larger lots. On the north side of 38th, they completely miss the neighborhood of single-family homes, many in larger lots, with a few single-story duplexes, and most of those are in individual ownership. To the south, they miss the neighborhood of single-family homes on large lots, which are on average almost half-acre in size. Here you have a classic collection of single-story mid-century ranch houses with mature landscaping, large trees, and a semi-rural feel. This proposed zoning is not at all compatible. Where are the 30-foot setbacks from the street? And what about the 30-foot separation we now have between the houses? This is wider than some of the lots in this development. How is a 25- to 50-foot tall wall all along 38th Avenue with only two 6-foot wide breaks in the entire length compatible with this area? And I think we all know now what 6-foot means. That's barely social distancing. The developer compares their proposal to the highly urbanized development on Wadsworth by Lucky's. Apparently, they're not aware of other developments in the area, including Quail Hollow and the brand-new homes on 32nd and Quail, with large, single-family homes on proper lots. Oh, and did you know that they want to build houses with no backyards? How is this compatible with the area? And this is not what families are looking for. Families want backyards with space where they can safely raise their families. These are the strong households we're looking for. The description of the existing surrounding neighborhood exactly meets the definition of established neighborhood as described in envisioned Wheat Ridge, which is our comprehensive plan. Here's the definition: A consistent character, predominantly single-family, mature landscaping, high rates of reinvestment and homeownership, increasing property values, consistent maintenance, and high desirability. Even the accompanying photo in the plan looks just like this neighborhood: a winding street, no sidewalks, deep setbacks, and a semi-rural feel. The number-one housing goal of the comprehensive plan is the preservation of established neighborhoods like this, which are the foundation of our community. The staff report treats this neighborhood as a revitalization area. There is a process and specific criteria for that designation, including high crime rates, decreasing homeownership, maintenance issues, et cetera. This is not a neighborhood revitalization area. It has not been designated as such, and it does not qualify under the specific guidelines. However, the applicant's project would inject density incompatibility. This is exactly what the comprehensive plan speaks against. In fact, this increasing incompatibility that the project would inject is what could start pushing this neighborhood out of the category of established neighborhood and into the category of revitalization area. I have one more note on the comprehensive plan. On page 120 is the statement: Plan developments, overreliance, and unpredictability. In addition, the code promotes overreliance on planned developments for new development instead of using straight zoning districts and standards. This means that the development projects require multiple review steps and are subject to a high degree of discretion rather than objective standards. As a result, predictability for developers, neighborhoods, and decision-makers is low. In addition, the requirement for rezoning to PDs adds another step in the process and adds uncertainty for new developments, which can be expensive and unpredictable for businesses and industries and frustrating for neighbors. Clearly, this rezoning proposal does not meet review criterion 3A. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could ask, hi, everybody, this is Ali Sheck. If I could ask those that had raised their hands and do intend to speak on Zoom, if you don't have them raised currently, please raise them again so I can see who would like to speak. Thank you. Next up, we have Guy, followed by Claudia Worth. So Guy and Claudia, you're on deck. Thank you.
Guy Namias, 3650 Ward Road. This is the night where people that have no business agreeing with each other all come together and agree on this. So from a couple of different angles. First, as a District 3 Parks Commissioner, I can share with you that this plan scares me. You know there'll be more cars than disclosed, and the more cars across the street from the city's Jewel Park, Discovery Park, is an accident waiting to happen. It's not about if, but when. Second, as a member of Revitalization Committee, this is far from what we meant to increase occupancy on main arteries. In all of our conversations with citizens, the main request was for the development, no matter what it is, was to mirror the neighborhood. Comparing today's duplexes to those duplexes in that neighborhood, it's like apples and fly swatters. That's what I have in my camper here. And third, many of you know that I'm a realtor. I can tell you that there's not enough homes for sale. It's true, inventory is low, causing a huge jump in values, but I can also tell you that the trend to move into highly populated areas like the Highlands or downtown has already reversed itself. The suburbs are hot. Evergreen, Morrison, Littleton, and yes, even Aurora, crazy hot. People want space, more space inside their homes, more space between their homes, and more space between each other. This plan is about four months too late. This is an opportunity for Wheat Ridge in a time where so many buyers are out there and space is at a premium. Without the need to move to Evergreen, Littleton, and Centennial, the opportunity is for us to be the best of both worlds. I'm not against building something there. It is private property, and if you want it to stay green, buy it. Otherwise, we already have 23 parks. But a few million-dollar homes in there certainly makes sense in this market, and in that space mirroring the neighborhood. It's what we've talked about all of last year. But cramming in people, cars, and buildings is against everything this community stands for. Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Claudia Worth with Tom Rip on deck. Thank you.
There, I had to unmute myself. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, you know...
Please introduce yourself again and give us your address.
Sorry. I'm Claudia Worth, W-O-R-T-H, 4650 Oak Street, Wheat Ridge, Colorado.
Thank you.
We've lived here 51 years. People moved to Wheat Ridge counting on the zoning they moved into. We moved into R2 zone. We knew duplexes would be built, and we didn't object to them. We, people moved into the R1 districts thinking they were going to have single-family homes with large lots, 30-foot setbacks, 15-feet setbacks from the property line on each side, and I think it was 15 feet in the back. That has all shrunk now for some reason, and I don't know why. But when we, people moved out here, many of the people that moved out here, second generations of the same family are living in the houses that their dad and moms bought. We've raised nine kids in Wheat Ridge. I've always appreciated the R1 zonings. My kids now are all grown up, thank God, but it's a lovely place to raise kids. The parks, the green belt, all that. You're not inviting children to these homes. There's no yards. You're using, the developers using the park as their yard, and that's not fair to the rest of the city. You need to have green space around your home. It's important for the environment. Trees are what's keeping the city a tree city. It's a place to plant a big tree on this property after they build all these homes. Please, keep the zoning R1. The developer can develop it, nice, single-family homes. I don't know how many can fit on there. I have no idea. It's laid out so funny. But I really think you ought to listen to the people. They know what they're talking about. They've lived here for years and years, and now their children are living in the same house as they grew up in. That should say something to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Tom Rip with Fran Singer on deck.
Mayor, can you hear me?
I can hear you well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. City Manager, I represent the...
Mr. Rip?
I'm sorry, forgot.
Mr. Rip, before you get going, would you introduce yourself, please?
I will.
Thank you.
After 42 years, I'd finally figure that out, but I apologize. Thomas Rip, I'm the attorney, 4315 Wadsworth Boulevard, Wheat Ridge, Colorado. I've been working and spending most of my adult life in Wheat Ridge, Colorado for the last 41 years. I represent the applicant in this case. I've heard and respect all of the comments that council, mayor, city manager, and city attorney have heard. I don't pretend to be anything other than a hired gun. My undergraduate degree is urban land economics. What does that mean? It means that you look to land and you go, well, what's the highest and best use? I'm not going to deny the fact that my clients are trying to utilize the property for its highest and best use. On the other hand, we have heard numerous individuals who tragically I will likely never have as clients again because I'm falling on my sword for even speaking with you this evening. I've represented many of those people, but my position on behalf of my client is, wait a minute. If there is such a nightmare that we are going to turn into a bad part of Oakland, California, if we are heading towards some nightmare in New York City, okay, great. The city can show up and write a check to my clients for the market value of the property. In the alternative, the individuals who are objecting to the use of this property as both single-family and duplex, let them show up, meet with my clients, and deny, I'm sorry, and agree to pay the market value of the property. To say that people moved here 20 years ago and they didn't expect anything to change, to say that individuals moved here and they expected this to be horse property, that they moved here and expected that this should be open park or a dog run, great. Go up, get out your checkbook. My office is 235 feet from the Yarrow Development. That development is now landscaped. What's being portrayed by various speakers tonight is false. It is a superb, well-managed, and well-designed project. And literally, I can walk out right now from my back door, and I'm at their front door in under three minutes. The development at the old Lucky's tragically, the development where I reside right off of Ward Road, just north of 44th, that is hardly the Sword of Damocles. Those are well-designed. Those are well-designed, well-executed projects. And for people to say, "Oh, well, we can't have any kids to run around." Well, guess what? That may be the case on day for the fact that you have a really, really big park just to the south that faces Kipling. But that said, we have rapidly changing demographics. Tragically, with COVID, you might not see that. But as soon as all the businesses are open again, I invite members of council and the objectors to go see Colorado Plus, go see Clanties, go see the businesses that are attracting young, double-income households. That's what my client is seeking to provide, is housing flows individually. And that's what they ask council to appoint tonight. Mr. Mayor, council, city attorney, manager, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Fran Singer, followed by Zariana.
Hi, can, am I on?
Yes, ma'am, you are.
Thanks. My name is Fran Singer. I live at 9810 West 36th Avenue, and I am proud to say I have lived here for 30 years. The city of Wheat Ridge was created in 1969 because the residents in this area did not want to be a part of the urban sprawl and rampant, and rampant annexation that was going on at that time. As such, the Wheat Ridge community should always be concerned about plans that tried to bring in Denver-like, high-density developments that impact the unique character and less urban nature of this wonderful locality. The envisioned Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan continuously refers to the need for maintaining a balance between the key values of promoting redevelopment along primary corridors and also focusing on retaining the character of the existing neighborhoods, such as ours. There is no evidence in the Planning Division Staff, in the Planning Division Staff Report that the existing character of the neighborhood is being, was being considered. Let's see. The staff plan made numerous, excuse me, unsubstantiated conclusions about the benefit of this development, such as stating that it is a transition between the neighborhood and the Kipling Corridor. This conclusion is that this is a good thing, but no significant benefit to the neighborhood was identified on benefit, let's see, on benefits, or, excuse me, only benefits to those who would inhabit the new development. Again, no balancing criteria were provided to staff report. It should be noted that the neighborhood has successfully transitioned with the Kipling Corridor for 48 years without the development in question. Some of my concrete examples, or some of my concerns with respect to the proposed density, first of all, I believe that the level of proposed, of the property density would be detrimental to the neighborhood, and I am protesting the zoning change. Some of my other concerns are access. Entrances on and off the property from either 38th Avenue or Johnson Street would create a traffic problem. Effect of increased traffic on the safety of the children in our neighborhood and those who are using the park. We have a problem with the drainage. We will have a problem with the noise level. We'll have a problem with our home values, parking, and we also have a problem with the pressure to re, this, this is stupid to have pressure to rezone this property. We don't need this pressure because, because of the, the things I just mentioned. One critical element missing in the staff report, am I still there? Uh-oh. Hello?
Yes.
Still talking, Ms. Singer.
Sorry, I'm almost done. One critical element missing in the staff report is a traffic study. Given the existing neighborhood traffic, the Discovery Park traffic, which is, which is assumed to be greater than the originally anticipate, than they originally anticipated due to the popularity of the park, the new development and rumored, and rumored redevelopment of the Apple Ridge Cafe property has not, has not been taken into consideration. And let's see, if you cannot, so you need a new traffic evaluation, which should be conducted prior to any, whether it's R1 or this, whatever you call it. You need to have traffic assessed. Because of the concern by the neighborhood for increased traffic on streets, not designed to handle a new development and potential safety concerns for children and pedestrians, and a general lack of the integration with the existing neighborhood, the proposed rezoning should not be approved. And I believe that you should love us as we are. We are single-family homes, and that's who we are. Please see us for what we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shek, who's our next speaker?
We have Zariana Marozovich next, and that's all that I have with hands up.
Please, Ms. Marozovich.
Hey, for getting to know my name, congratulations. I applaud you.
Thank you very much.
Great. My name is Zariana Marozovich, and I live at 3651 Ward Road in Wheat Ridge. I wanted to applaud those that had the courage to show up at City Hall in person. So one of the things that I would like to jump into is, again, the legal notices being improperly noticed. Besides the 15-day timeline, the notices did not have the verbiage that's required, that it shall contain the statement that specific plans for the proposed changes are available for inspection at City Hall. It was also not posted correctly in the Wheat Ridge transcript or on the signage itself on Johnson Street. I do have to applaud that it got handwritten on this Johnson Street signage on 623. Appears to have been added as an afterthought. So these notices are deficient because they did not include the legal description of the property or the statement concerning availability of plans at City Hall, again, which are required by charter. So, and additionally, if you go to the website, it says you can find it on the city website. When you try going to that website, you get a message saying, "We're sorry, but there is not a web page matching your entry." So you are being sent to an incorrect site. Also, Section 26-109 of the Wheat Ridge Code further requires one sign per street frontage that signs shall be posted within property boundaries, and they shall be visible from the street without obstruction. Only two signs were found, both on Johnson Street, and none to the southeast and north. So the property of Johnson Street was not properly noticed, and so we really should not be having this hearing tonight about it. Additionally, the zoning should be rejected for the following reasons. As stated at previous city council meetings, previously posted and published notices did not meet the time or wording requirements of the charter and code, and which were not corrected for this current posting. This posting does not meet legal requirements. The application violates Section 26-301, which states, "The planned development process may not be used to circumvent the intent and spirit of the protections afforded by this chapter. The criteria for review listed in 26-303D have not been met. Backup materials from applicant and staff contain errors, omissions, and mischaracterizations which impede an informed and impartial decision-making process." And to Mr. Rep's comments, Section 26-112 states, "All applicants are advised, there is no right to a change of zone of property." No right at all. So our right to referendum is in the state constitution and city charter. A yes decision from this virtual meeting will trigger referendum time limits, which means citizens must either forego a referendum on the project, which is a waiver of our rights under the charter, or run the risk of engaging in personal contact during the COVID outbreak. As a reminder, COVID-19 is on the uptick again in Colorado, and many of us who would be canvassing are in high-risk groups. We would really like city council to give us clear and concise instructions sometime in the next week or so as to how we are to safely conduct a referendum if you vote yes today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Shek, do we have additional speakers?
Well, Mayor, I don't see any other hands up, although I'd like to just ask, we do have one person on the line with a number ending 7132. I don't know if they have any interest in speaking.
Mayor, council, that was, this is Tom Rep, that was my backup.
Thank you.
I believe there's a gentleman on that line on 7132 who's trying to speak, but sir, we can't, we can't really hear you.
That was Mr., that was Mr. Rep. He's already spoken.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you, Mayor.
That's, that's fine. So we don't see any more hands in Zoom?
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
This is Becky Luthwaite.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to speak.
Okay, please give us your name and address, and you may speak.
Okay, Becky Luthwaite, L-E-W-P-H-W-A-I-T-E, 9860 West 37th Avenue. I'm sure the council has reviewed comments on Wheat Ridge to speak, as well as doing their homework on this proposal to rezon the property. You've heard and you've read the pros and cons. I could use this opportunity to repeat much of what has been already said tonight in protest, but I'm hoping you've come to this meeting, hopefully not falling asleep at this time, but with an open mind to make a decision for the people, for the neighborhood. I feel confident each one of you views the city of Wheat Ridge as a unique community down to the very neighborhoods where you reside. Please remember voters overwhelmingly said in the last election that we don't want our neighborhoods rezoned to allow increase, allow increased or high density. A little over 6100 people voted no, a little over 3700 voted yes. So with that in mind, I implore you to keep Wheat Ridge unique. Don't let it become like the city of Denver, where increased density has taken over lovely neighborhoods and increased unbelievably traffic issues. Please do not vote to change this property from R1 to PRD. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shek, we, do we, do you know of any other, other members of the public? Or I'm going to make an announcement here. We've had a lot of comment on this. I don't want to shut off anyone. We want to hear from everyone in the public who wants to speak on this issue. If you wish to speak on this issue under the public comment, please so indicate now. Okay, I'm going to close the public comment. We're going to take a 10-minute break. We will reconvene at 9:15. We're going to take a ten-minute break. We will reconvene at nine fifteen.
Yeah, I'll ask Mr. Cutler if him or the applicant has any comments they'd like to make.
Mr. Cutler?
I don't have any specific comments. I am able to address some of the concerns that came up in the meeting. I prefer those were asked of me rather than running through the list. I know I see several members of the applicant team on the line. I'm not sure if they have anything else they'd like to add. Otherwise, I feel like we can go into questions and potentially have our city attorney address some of the issues that were brought up as well regarding notification, but also some of the code questions.
If I may, can I say something?
Please introduce yourself, and if you are, are you part of the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, yes. Would you please introduce yourself?
My name is Ardalon Hardy, and my wife is right next to me, Kim Hardy. We live at ten two forty West Thirty Fourth Place in Wheatridge, Colorado. And I just want to make a couple of comments on what everybody said.
Thank you.
First of all, there's a lot of, he says, she said, whatever accusation, though are not true. I'd just like, I'd like the city council to consider that. Two, that property eventually is going to be developed, whether it's today, or tomorrow, or next year, or while we are gone. And I think what we have proposed, which, if we didn't like it, we wouldn't propose to live there. We've been in the city of Wheatridge for forty, close to forty years. Our kids went to high school here, graduate from school. Anyway, if we didn't like the property, we would not make a decision to build a house there. That property would develop sooner or later. I think what we are proposing fit into that community perfectly, because someday, when we are all gone, somebody will come and put a commercial in there. I guarantee it, you know? I don't understand, how could that not fit into that community? This whole duplex is a commercial around it. I think it's a perfect fit. We are basically thirty seven percent of what the city requires for the size lot. I'm just shocked by the comments these people make. And I have noticed the same people show up, the city council, and oppose everything in the city that, that comes up. The same group opposes everything. And the city council, I would assume the city council has to realize that, understand that. Would you like anything to add?
The, the, this is Kim Hardy, again, one zero two four zero West Thirty Fourth Place. Just want to address the comments that the SDP was not presented, the SDP isn't required to be presented, and there's quite a bit of cost incurred to produce the SDP. And if the ODP is not approved, we don't want to have spent the money for the SDP. The, the plan that was presented is the plan that would be developed if, if this plan is approved. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you for your time.
Yes, thanks.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Cutler, do you have anything else? Otherwise, we'll go to questions from council, and that may prompt your responses.
Sure, I would like to address one aspect that was brought up, and Kim touched on it a little bit, which is the required process for an outline development plan. So an outline development plan, the ODP that we're reviewing tonight, does establish all of the development standards for the property. And if approved this evening, those would be set in stone. So that includes not only the density of the ten units, but also all of the required setbacks, the maximum height, the required number of parking spaces. Any changes to that plan would require an amendment to the ODP, which would require a vote of council again. So effectively, re-res zoning the property with a new ODP. So the plan tonight, if approved, would set in stone all of those setbacks that are proposed on the plan, all of the parking requirements that are proposed on the plan, maximum building heights, open space, and even architecture. So the ODP is binding in that aspect. The specific development plan gets into the more specific drainage and grading and utilities. That's a much more comprehensive review. But a lot of the standards in the ODP, the SDP builds upon. So there's not going to be suddenly a three-story building if the maximum building height is twenty eight feet, for example. That's just not possible unless there was another zone change to then increase the building height for this development. And we don't generally see those.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for your presentation. I will open this up to questions from council. If you have a question, please raise your hand, and I will call on you. Ms. Hoppy, followed by Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to staff for the presentation. Mr. Cutler, can you, can you go over there? There were a lot of comments kind of against that, just that it's a planned residential development. So can you, can you give me maybe one or two, like, specific to this project, to this property, differences where if it were an R three, what would there be no control over in R three that we actually have control over as a PRD on this property?
Sure, so with a standard zone district such as R three, R two, or R one, there are setbacks and height requirements, but there is no control over other aspects of site design, including architecture and landscaping. So for example, if you build a house in R one, the, the city does not review any of the architecture on there. It can look however it wants to look. We don't review landscape plans for those types of projects as well. But with a planned residential development, the city and there's a lot more control over the landscape plans that are reviewed, parking plans that are reviewed, and architecture. The other aspect is that R three and R two are actually, R three is significantly denser than what this planned residential development would allow. R three would allow up to twelve units per acre. And R two is more like seven or eight units per acre. So that's, that's the main thing, though, is a planned residential development allows for additional control. In this case, they're actually proposing to have lower height than the R one zoning would allow, which is thirty five feet, which would allow a three-story building. But they're proposing to lower that to between twenty five and thirty feet, which would not necessarily allow for a three-story building.
Thank you.
Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thanks, Mayor. I had a question about the lot just to the east of this proposed site. I am new on council, so I'm just trying to understand when that was zoned R two, and if we could kind of, like, talk through the differences, because a lot of what we're hearing from, from a lot of the residents is that this doesn't fit the surrounding neighborhood where we have duplexes right next, next door. And the plan, it looks really similar, just as a new city council member looking at this. And so I just would like to, a little more clarity, and it's, it's kind of along the same lines of what city council member Hoppy was asking. But just, can you give a little background on how that became an R two and what that, what that difference is?
I can't speak to the exact date that that was rezoned. And it's, it's actually R two A zoning, which is more dense than R two. It actually allows four plexes on lots that are of a certain size. So again, R two A allows denser development than the proposed PRD this evening. I can't speak to why or when it was rezoned. I don't know if Ken or someone that's been here longer than I have could speak to that. Does that, does that answer your question, councilman?
Yeah, I think, I think it does, unless anybody knows when that was rezoned.
Ms. Nosler Beck, I, I don't know.
Okay, and I, I think I just had a follow-up question, too. I really appreciated Scott clarifying that with the OPD, like, if we move forward with this tonight, we'll be setting those self-imposed kind of regulations. They won't just be self-imposed, they'll be put in, they'll be put in stone. So there won't be any kind of bait and switch, I think, is one of the public comments that we got with some concerns that constituents had. So I appreciate you addressing that. Thanks.
Thank you. I've got Mr. Stites up next, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to see if Mr. Dahl could shed some light. We had a couple of people talk about both noticing and a couple of other things with regards to that. I know you've been kind of working on that for a while.
Mr. Dahl?
Sure, the, without getting into too much intense detail, the, the notices for this property, as council is well aware, have been gone out now several times. If there is a project that's, that's had more notice than required over time, it is this, it is this project, projects well-known in the community as having been through a series of hearings that have continued. I've worked with staff on the text for the notices. And again, without getting into intense detail, the signs comply with charter. One can always make signs better. If you made the signs six feet by ten feet, you could put a lot more detail on the, on the signs. But the city has consistently relied upon information on the signs to direct people to other places where they can find the rest of the information, like the legal description of the property, for example, which has never been on the sign. But if you really want to know the course and distance detail for a legal description for this particular property, it's something that can be found. Having said that, I, I will say that we made some additional adjustments for the additional set of notices that we had the opportunity to send on this, because given the amount of time, there was one Monday that was extra, you know, fifth Monday in the week, in the month of June, and that allowed staff to be able to fully satisfy all of the time frames for a notice. I can tell you that I'm quite comfortable with the notice having been accomplished for this, for this, this property. And any alleged defects are, I think, lower-than-level sections, certainly not something that would unwind it on, on appeal. And I'd be very comfortable defending the notice requirements that have been applied in this case.
If I may ask a follow-up about referendums, I know that's kind of been something we've been talking about for a few weeks as well. Has anything changed as far as the state goes on that? And we have any guidance for citizens as far as that goes?
Nothing's changed since the last meeting and the various letters that I've sent council. And councils are aware that I've kept you apprised of developments around the circulation process. The most recent public health order, I think we're up to the eighth amended public health order now. The most recent Public Health Order, I think we're up to the eighth amended Public Health Order now from of the governor again states. The actions of petition circulation are critical government functions that are permitted to be conducted. I've also informed council, as you're as you're aware, and I think it was mentioned during. Hearing that the governor's effort for state-level petitions. Aligned with the Secretary of State putting together some emergency rules to allow signature petitions other than in person. Was rejected by the Cars Supreme Court unanimously, actually, within the last couple. And I told the council, and I want to make it clear that that does not bind the city because that decision only applied to state-level petitioning activity. I think the Supreme Court's decision, which I shared with you, is helpful to you in sort of figuring out what, if anything, you want to do. You're not obliged to take any particular action. I will say that in all of the public health orders, there are. There's enormous amount of guidance to businesses, to employers. About how to interact with the public. If you want to get a Domino's pizza, you call ahead, you have to sign your credit card receipt. But you do that. I'm not saying that that's a perfect solution, but we're in a context in which no solution is going to be complete. For anyone until the pandemic is completely in the rearview mirror, something we do not know. So if short of the council adopting some kind of that's changing the rules for signature petitions. Have a fair amount of protections built into the statute. Short of that, then we look to the guidance given us by. Our Department of Public Health and Environment in the various suggestions they have made to employers and to. And the businesses, that's, I think, short of council acting by ordinance, that's what's available to people. Beginning and ending with the petition circulation is specifically identified in those public health orders as being permitted to be conducted.
Thank you. Are there additional questions from council? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question, excuse me, my question is relating to the comment that was made regarding. The use of private drives, alleys, or private driveways and like. And within this particular plan, how does this alleyway conform with that section 26-412, Part B regarding access?
I can tell you what the city's pattern and practice has been with respect to. Private streets or private alleyways in planned residential districts and in, I think, MUC districts. Mixed-use commercial districts, but primarily planned use residential development. That has been that the planned development district regulations specifically said. That they're to promote efficient use of land and facilitate. As more economic arrangement of buildings, buildings, circulation systems, land use and utilities. That's in the PRD regulations, which of course are an overlay to our traditional zone district regulations. And the city has pretty consistently. Applied that language in the PRD context to permit private drives that exceed. The four-unit restriction elsewhere in Article 6 of the code. Article 3 of the code is the planned residential, there's the PRD. Language and city is consistently viewed that language as allowing a departure from the. Traditional zone district restrictions that you find in Article 6.
So that that speaks to the zone district, it doesn't speak to the subdivision regulations, which is a separate category, is it not?
That's correct. It doesn't speak to.
And so the section 26-412 is relative to street design and subdivision regulations, and this would be a subdivision at some point, would it not?
I certainly it would, but I guess the point I'm I'm making is that the. City's pattern of practice with respect to circulation and in PRDs. Has been to permit the use of private drives in the way proposed. City could certainly choose to give direction to staff to change that. I I think if that were the case, it would need to be expressed and we need to limit the flexibility, which is the hallmark of a PRD. In in further ways than the way it is limited now, it's not limited, or at least with respect to circulation. PRD, right, sections in the code. Tell us that that is something that can be varied.
But so is that what's the particular section in the PRD regulation that says the street design? Code can be circumvented?
It's not that express, and let me draw you to it. Section 26, 301. Letter C, purpose, number. Four, to promote the efficient use of land and to facilitate a more economic arrangement of building. Circulation systems, land use and utilities. I'm the first to admit, it doesn't say private drives and and roadways. But at some point, you have to be able to say to achieve the purpose of a PRD is that is is permitting it. More than four units on a private drive in the context of the particular design, appropriate or not. And PRD regulations give you the room to be able to do that. Ken, do you have anything to add to that or have I covered it?
I would just reiterate that it's it's certainly long been our practice to interpret that section of the code in PRDs in the manner you described. And I would say it's a good question, Mr. Urban. But as a practical matter, various aspects of Article 4 are often varied or somehow. You know, interpreted differently when using a PRD, so whether it could be a drainage improvement, it could be. Something related to what public dedications are made, so we just think the spirit of the PUD is to. Or the PRD is to give that flexibility. And as a as a practical matter, I mean, I would just point out that, you know, literally.
Ken, you froze up.
We've lost your video or audio feed. Wait and see whether that recovers for a moment.
I'll I'll try to get hold of them. Maybe we can move on to another question.
Okay, thank you. I will we'll put that on pause. And is there another question from council?
Can I ask, can I add a comment to the private drive situation, please?
I'm I'm sorry, who's talking?
My name is Christine Simcox. I'm the architect on the project and I present, I made the presentation for the applicant.
Um, yes.
Hi, okay, so I need to, my name is Christine Simcox. My address is 11103 San Juan Range Road, Littleton, Colorado 80127. And I wanted to just make a quick comment that the private drive was something I added in my conceptual drawings. And Nathan is here if he wants to speak to this as well, but all of the documents that would be approved or voted on tonight. Say that it's an alley, so I I made that more of an interpretation because we had feedback about. About the the speed that people could go, anybody could park there, you you know, anybody using the park, discovery park could park there. So I was just saying it is more of an opportunity to show that we would have, be able to, you know, control that speed limit. Have signage for parking. Now Nathan is doing the the street design and that's meeting something, you know, meeting your code, but that's where that term came in was on on me. So I put that in there mostly to respond to what was brought up at the planning commission hearing.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Did we get Mr. Johnstone back on the on the line?
To follow up on, to follow, I'll let Ken continue his remarks, then I have a follow-up question.
Okay, Mr. Johnstone, you were in the middle of of some talking and you're mute now.
Apparently, my 12-year-old iPad does this better than my brand-new Surface Pro, but. Yeah, I was just, I think I cut out when I was just describing that there's been, you know, literally probably a dozen different townhome developments that have been. You know, developed with these sorts of private access drives in public access easements. So the Yarraw Gardens Project, the Riverside and Creekside Terrace Projects that are at 44th and and Tabor. The Perrin's Row Project, which goes back a dozen years, all those incorporate these types of private access drives in some form or fashion.
Thank you. Did that conclude your questions, Mr. Urban?
That did answer it. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions, Ms. Hutchinson and then Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm wondering if this development is going to be a metro district.
Ms. Hutchinson, not to my knowledge, there would be a homeowners association with that would maintain the common area improvement such as the drainage.
Thank you. Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two questions, just seeking a little bit of clarification on terminology. My first one is a couple of different comments on some of the. Some of the materials that were provided for us throughout high and medium density neighborhoods. And I'm wondering if someone could provide a clarification, what's the difference between high density and medium density when we're looking at something like this? And then I do have a second question.
I can speak to that to start. So our zoning codes, the straight zone district regulations, so R1, R2, R3. Are defined as being low density, low to medium density or medium to high density. So an R1 is a low density as defined by that definition, and then an R3 is a medium to high density. The city does also allow higher density developments in the mixed-use zone districts up to 21 units per acre. So it is somewhat relative, but our our code actually does define what a medium density development is. And in terms of the spectrum, this development definitely falls into the category of of low to medium density in terms of what's actually allowed citywide.
And you said that you actually have a definition of medium density. Is that a units per acre definition or what do you use for defining that?
It's, I don't believe it's a units per acre, but when you look at the definitions of residential 2, residential 2A. Even R1C zone districts like that, it will say this is a low-density zone district or a low-to-medium-density zone district. So it's kind of a a tier of zone districts that it goes up. As the density gets higher.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question is some other terms that have been kind of thrown around, I think with, that I could do some clarity on is talking about. Residential neighborhoods versus transitional areas and a little bit clarification when we're looking at what is transitional versus what is considered residential. Any clarification would be helpful. Thank you.
I'll begin and what Ken chime in if I miss anything. So the comprehensive plan defines. Multiple types of areas of development. This site is in the neighborhood district. Which allows for single-family homes and kind of all the way up to duplexes and townhomes. When we look at sites, a lot of what we're looking at is the surrounding area. And so when you look at developments, oftentimes what we're trying to go for is. I mean, to the east, there's duplexes, to the south, there's single-family homes, but on the west, it's a largely commercial area. And so finding a balance between all of those is really what transition means. It's not defined in our our zone district. But I do want to point out that this development site is located on a primary corridor of the city, 38th Avenue. And is less than a block from Kipling Street, so that's that's kind of when we get into a transitional land use, it can still be residential in nature. It is single-family homes and duplexes, but it is a little bit higher intensity than the single-family homes to the south. Ken, I don't know if I missed anything or if you want to chime in.
Just just a little bit more, Scott. You know, we've tried to describe this in our in our staff report as a transitional piece of property, given what what Scott's just described, right? The the nature of the commercial corridors and what the existing land uses are, which is a mix of single-family home and duplexes as you go to the east. The other thing to keep in mind, I think, is it's always, there's always some discretion in how you, you know, do interpret our comprehensive planning documents. They're specifically not intended to be read as a as a parcel-by-parcel zoning map. Quite to the contrary, they're supposed to be guiding documents that are subject to, you know, kind of reasonable interpretation. So that's what we've tried to do here, given that the Kipling Corridor is, you know, listed as a fairly. As an activity center at 38th and Kipling and a and a commercial corridor. And then how you transition that over to the residential neighborhood, I think, is what we tried to achieve a balance of for this proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions from council? Ms. Nosler Beck and then Ms. Weaver.
Just for members of council who are newer, I think it would be helpful to just. Understand how this is different than the plan that was originally presented. That got voted down, so I don't know if that's you, Scott, or Ken. But it sounds like there's more parking available in this plan.
The original proposal for this site, I think, was seen in actually 2018 and it proposed 16 dwelling units. All of which were duplex units, so it was a lot more building and units on the site. So for comparison, tonight's proposal is 10 dwelling units, whereas the previous one was 16 and all duplexes. I don't know exactly what's changed as far as the parking goes, but I do know that. This project is actually providing more parking per unit for spaces than the original proposal.
Thanks.
Thank you. And Ms. Weaver, did you have your hand up?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Scott, could you explain? I heard this at the, I I think it was at the beginning of your presentation, but that. If the, if it isn't zoned to a PRD, that there was no option. I unfortunately, I think I misplaced my note at the break. But could you talk about the? Other zoning options because several of the speakers asked about continuing it to be R1. And I was trying to understand how you explained the one acre issue. Could could you just go over that again? Am I making any sense at all?
You are. I can explain a little bit.
Beginning of your presentation and I just wanted to to absorb that a little bit more.
Sure, so the the city code requires that if there is a rezoning for residential development. Any property over an acre is required to be rezoned to planned residential development. There is no other option, there no other residential zone district as an option. That includes R2, R3, R2A. And that's simply because of that code requirement. And and a lot of that frankly is to provide assurance that the development will meet certain standards. And so when you rezone to a a straight zone, a district like R2 or R3. A lot of the controls that I mentioned earlier, such as architecture, parking, landscaping. Those are less in place than under a planned residential development.
So this is actually protecting the acre and its overall look more than. Than the R districts, is that correct?
That's the intent of the plan development regulations.
Okay, thank you very much for clarifying that.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppy.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Cutler, can I ask then if something is rezoned to an R2A? Then the assumption is that it was less than an acre for that to be able to happen?
Are you specifically referring to the development to the east or just a general? Likely that was done before the one acre requirement was put in place. My guess is that was done in the mid to late 90s or or even early 2000s, so 20-plus years ago. And that requirement may not have been placed in that time.
Okay, I was just trying to figure out how much land that was with that requirement, so thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions from staff? Or from council of, of staff? Before I close the public hearing, are there any more questions that city council has of the staff or the applicant? And I'm going to close the public hearing, and Ms. Weaver, a motion is in order.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill number eleven dash twenty twenty and ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at ninety eight hundred West Thirty Eighth Avenue from residential one to planned residential development with an outline development plan on second right, excuse me, on second reading that it take effect fifteen days after final publication for the following reasons. Number one, the planning commission has recommended approval of the rezoning after conducting a proper public hearing. Number two, the proposed rezoning has been reviewed by the community development department, which has forwarded its recommendation of approval. And number three, the proposed rezoning has been found to comply with the criteria for review in section twenty six dash three zero three of the Code of Laws.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Hoppy. Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a council member that's been on council for a while, I, I do remember the previous hearing, and it was no less contentious than this evening's hearing. And I appreciate the residents being willing to come out and speak their piece on this particular issue. And a lot of the refrains that I heard tonight were similar to those that were provided at the last hearing regarding this property. And one of the concerns that I had about this property was regarding that private drive access. And I understand the, the need for the PRD to be somewhat flexible on that. What I found interesting was a lot of the discussion in comparison to the Iris Court property, which is directly to the east of this property. And from my recollection from the previous hearing is that, that, that particular development is just a little over two thousand more square feet than this particular one. And it has ten units. And some of the residents who spoke at the last public hearing on this particular issue indicated that it would be more acceptable for this particular property to have a density similar to the Iris Court one. And if it had that similar density, then it would be okay. But here again tonight, that those same individuals indicated that would not be the case. And that's difficult to hear as a council member because we're trying to do what's best for the neighborhood and trying to look at what, you know, what is a good fit and what is a good compromise to help kind of meet everybody's needs here and giving a property owner the right to develop the property as they see fit, as well as understanding that our ability to provide for duplexes along Kipling prevents higher density within the, the other parts of the neighborhood. So if we allow higher density along our urban corridors, that protects our ability to maintain lower densities in the inner neighborhoods. So I will be voting in favor of this particular proposal because of that fact that it does mirror very almost identical to the Iris Court property, as well as the fact that the developer, the applicant has made significant changes from the previous application down from what was originally twenty three, then to sixteen and now to ten units. And I think that it's a decent compromise. And I understand the concern, and I, I have seen it in the past with respect to the differences between an O D P and S T P. And I, I have also heard from developers who've indicated that their whole purpose in developing a property is so that they can move into it, and that never came to fruition. So I hope that the, the attestations made tonight or the indications that these applicants would be moving into this particular development are remain true. And it's only because this has happened in the past that I say that, because we've had other applicants who have made hints and suggestions that they're going to do one thing and another thing happens. So I would encourage the applicant to do everything they can to stick to what is being presented here tonight, and that the S T P is identical to what is presented in the O D P. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to kind of speak to some of the comments that were being made. And, and actually, Councilmember Urban touched on a couple points of mine that, you know, we, we originally started with this development at twenty three units. And then it was brought down to sixteen. And now this ten unit development has mirrored exactly what all of the constituents had said, you know, if this, if this development were like the rest of the neighborhood, if it fit the character of the neighborhood, then we, you, we wouldn't be here opposing it. And yet here we are, several times, several, a couple of years down the road, several plans down the road, where we have long term residents having bought the property and wanting to reinvest in the community that they not only have lived in, but brought their families up in. Until they're, they're, and I, I must say, like, I, I really didn't want to touch on, on this issue because I, I think it's a really heavy one, but I think there's a really large elephant in the room that we've had a really difficult time addressing about why Wheat Ridge Incorporated is, as a city. And some of it was kind of brought up this evening. And I, I love the story of Wheat Ridge's incorporation, especially that we were like fighting neck and neck with Lakewood in order to be able to be Wheat Ridge as opposed to Lakewood and not, not being annexed into Denver. But when, when I hear people talk about density and when we talk about density being built into our charter, we're, and, and I've heard people say this in the community directly to me about, like, that was in order to prevent what they considered ghettos and large density apartments. And in nineteen sixty nine, we were just a few years away from desegregating. And so it's really hard not to think that the reason why we are so anti-density and so anti-urban sprawl and not wanting to be Denver and not wanting to be all these other communities is because at that point in time, we were a much demographically white community, and we wanted our schools to remain desegregated, or to remain segregated, our community to remain segregated. So I think I, I didn't feel welcome hearing a lot of the comments tonight because I wouldn't be defined as a strong household. I'm a single mom, raising two boys, renting from my parents. I am going, I am planning on purchasing the home. So I represent that generational carryover where we find a community that we loved, we grew up in, and we want to raise a family in. And so, like, I'm living that reality of loving Wheat Ridge for what it is and for wanting my children to go through the schools in this community, because I had a great upbringing. And I know that, I know most of my neighbors have lived here for longer than I've been alive. They're still in their, their homes. Their children are wanting to either buy their properties or choosing to buy other properties in Wheat Ridge. And so I, and that's an amazing testament to our community and what we have to offer. But we also have to understand that we need to be bringing in the future and like what young families are needing at this point in time, especially in the metro Denver area where it's ridiculously expensive to live. And most of that American dream is not obtain, attainable for the, the millennial generation. So for us to be able to say that this household will attract a two income family or two income household, may or may not have kids. I mean, I have a great couple that just moved in right next door. I'm hoping that they'll start a family. They may or may not, you know, but like, I, I think that the whole point is for us to have this cycle, like turnover, you know, the next generation needs to be moving into this community and bringing their kids, like bringing up their kids in this community. And I think that a lot of the comments that I've had, I feel like this development, one, is a great compromise. It's not too dense. It has amazing amenities. It's on almost two major corridors that we identified in the N R S, Thirty Eighth Avenue and Kipling. And I, I, I am in full support of this project, and I really hope that young families move into the community, use that park, walk over to Apple Ridge to have an amazing breakfast or lunch, walk over to Sprouts and get their, their groceries. There's a school right down the street. Elementary schools just to the west of here, like this, this area is going to be developed one way or another. And I think that this is a, a great compromise. So I, I will also be supporting this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to just echo what Councilman Dozeman and Councilman Urban both said. As one of the people who, who worked pretty, pretty, or pretty, pretty hard on the N R S, the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy. And I know we haven't implemented it yet, but as I look at this project, I, I kind of see a lot of elements of, of the N R S in this. This is a developer, a development that was kicked back to a year, year and a half ago. And then they had to go work with the neighborhood, and they had to actually talk to the neighbors and figure out what would be acceptable. And I feel like what they've come back with is a pretty decent compromise from what was twenty two townhomes to now three duplexes and four single family homes. And if, again, if I'm, if I'm putting my N R S hat on and I'm looking at it, if I'm standing on Kipling and I'm looking from north to south, I'm looking at duplexes into single family homes all the way up. Well, this is going to be duplexes into single family homes all the way up. So it does fit the character of the neighborhood. It was something that they did work with many of the neighbors on and got feedback on. So I, I will be supporting this project, and I think it's a good one. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppy, and then Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do just want to say that I agree with the council members who have spoken before me. And, and one of the things is that in order for us to have an inclusive community, we need to have a diverse community. And in order to have a diverse community, we need to have diverse housing options. This is an updated housing product, product. It can bring new people into our community, whether they are families or, you know, just young people starting out their life and are, you know, starting with a buildup product. So duplexes, condos, those are, those create a move up market. And so they can start in the duplex and then hopefully stay in our community and, and move into some of the larger single family homes. A couple of comments, though, duplexes as defined by the National Home Builders Association are called single family homes attached. And so there are single family homes detached. That would be typically the regular one home, the ranches, the twos, the three stories. A duplex is considered a single family home attached. So these are single family homes in a single family home area. It is in a commercial corridor, which is what we heard is please build in commercial corridors, stay out of our out of the middle of our neighborhoods. And then the last thing I'd just like to say is there were a lot of comments about how the vote last November told us so about PRDs, but I want to be very clear about this. Every project should be judged on its own merit for that project. What was voted on last November was not no against PRDs. PRDs give us more control of the type of product we get in our communities. It was not a vote. It was not sixty percent of people saying, don't ever do a PRD. So I want to be very clear about that. And every project gets, should have its own opportunity to be judged on its own merit. I will be voting yes for this, and I support this project. I think it looks amazing, and I'm super excited to see it happen.
Thank you. Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo the comments that have been stated before me. And in particular, like Mr. Stites, I spent a lot of time on the N R S last year. And this is exactly the kind of project that we were hearing our community wanted, opportunities for people to purchase a home and come into Wheat Ridge. And, and I think it also really rewards the community engagement that the developer has gone through with our community. As been stated, you know, it's gone from twenty something down to ten units, which is actually in line with the character of the neighborhood. I actually went and walked pretty extensively along the corridor and kind of through there. And, you know, it would have the, the same feel that the other Thirty Eighth Avenue presenting properties have. I did hear from constituents, and I think it's, it's a legitimate concern. The idea of the domino effect, you know, if we, if we say yes to this, where do we, where do we not say yes to this? And for me, there's a lot of clarity on the fact that Thirty Eighth Avenue is actually designated a primary arterial. It's the same roadway designation that Kipling and Wadsworth have. And there's a reason we have medium density designations along streets like that. Nobody is going to buy a million dollar house on a primary arterial that by definition actually serves people. It's actually defined as a major street used by regional through traffic. So this, as, as Ms. Hoppy said, I'm excited that this provides opportunities for a variety of people either to choose to call Wheat Ridge home or to continue calling Wheat Ridge home. My lifestyle's changed recently, and I'm not so sure I want to maintain a third of an acre by myself. And I've been really grateful that in my district, there are some housing opportunities for me to allow to continue to live here that also don't require me spending half of my weekend maintaining a yard. So I think we really need to be cognizant of assuming what lifestyle needs are that people have. I want retirees to stay here. Sometimes maintaining a yard is, is hard for retirees. This also is consistent in terms of land use size as the Cambridge development, which is further to the west. Both Cambridge and Fireside were developed as PRDs and really allowed us to bring super high quality living experiences for people in our community. And I hope to see every one of the kids who lives in this development playing in Discovery Park, because that's a really, I wish I lived across the street from that growing up. So I strongly support this, and I really want to express gratitude to the developer for continuing to work with the community to find a solution that, that fits us. So I'm a definite yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have further discussion on the motion? Ms. Weaver. You're on mute, please.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Just echoing the, my colleagues. And I am, I think this is the right thing in the right place, according to our comprehensive plan. And, and I also just want to echo that, you know, we've heard a lot of voices tonight. There were also a lot of comments in support of this development on Wheat Ridge Speaks. And there was a comment made that, that somehow we aren't checking those, those comments. And, and well, no, I don't think anyone's checking if we check those comments, but I think all of us do check those comments, and we take them all very seriously, just as we do the, the, the voice comments and the, the video comments that we, that we hear in the meeting. So I want to, I want to thank everybody tonight who either wrote in for Wheat Ridge Speaks or spoke at the meeting tonight. Thanks for all of your comments.
Thank you. Additional discussion on the motion? Ms. Hutchinson, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. I work for the citizens, and I appreciate the comments that were over the phone, and also Wheat Ridge Speaks for several months. So I don't like the idea of changing R one. There could be three single homes there. I've read the two articles that were presented tonight, both from Forbes and also the Denver Post. And with people, especially at this time when they have been confined, not able to get out, is when you really do appreciate when you have an area to be able to go out to and walk around. So the articles that I have seen, it's, or read, it's like the people want to have more space, and that means lot size. And also in the Denver Post, people work from home. They're going to be working from home. It's very important to have land, open space and a view, and people are looking for that. So maybe people haven't been confined or you're not working at home. But we are so lucky to be able to have yards so that there is some green space. If you want a garden or something, you can do that. I looked at these properties that are surrounding this development, R one and R two. These lots are way smaller, and there's hardly, not very much green space at all. So to have a child run over to Discovery Park to play really isn't the thing that I would think about when I buy a house. I would think I would have a yard where they'd be able to play out there, and I don't have to watch them crossing Johnson Street or else going over there with them every single day to make sure they're safe. So I'm, I'm not for changing R one. There could be three very nice single homes that are there. And so I will be voting against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional discussion on the motion? Ms. Hulteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had meant to add in my comments that I think when we're talking about the domino effect, I think this, this particular proposal would I think this, this particular proposal would be different to me if it were one parcel to the south. If it weren't on Thirty-Eighth Avenue, I think the context would be different. And so um, just for the constituents who've been speaking tonight, who are concerned about this in the context of the next proposal, um, for me, it's really looking at its location and its location on Thirty-Eighth as a principal arterial. I think if this were truly within a neighborhood, I would be looking at it differently. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Urban?
Uh, I'd regret to state in my remarks that I did review the public, the Wheat Ridge Speaks comments and want to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. Uh, is there additional discussion on the motion? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go to a vote. Uh, this, there was a valid protest filed on this. It will require six affirmative votes to be approved. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. And will the clerk please count the votes? Ms. Hoppy, are you voting? Thank you.
I see seven I-votes.
Okay, all those opposed?
I see one. Mr. Mayor, the vote is seven to one in favor of the motion. It has achieved a supermajority.
Okay, the motion carries. Thank you very much. I want to thank all of the citizens who came tonight and uh participated in this public hearing. I know that we've had discussions about how public hearings will be conducted. While we're confined by the pandemic to a, a virtual format, we've uh made arrangements to have people come to city council. And I'm glad to see that citizens have availed themselves of that. And I want to thank everybody for their interest and their comments on this. So thank you so much. With that, we will go to agenda item number two. Ms. Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number thirteen dash twenty twenty, An Ordnance Amending Chapter Twenty-Six of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws pertaining to the Form and Timing of Cash and Loop Payment for Parkland Dedication Requirements. Case Number Z O A twenty dash oh-three. At issue, a subdivision ordinance requires cash and loop payment for parkland dedication requirements to be made in the form of a certified check and at the time a plant is recorded for new subdivisions. Staff has found that payment in the form of a certified check is not necessary and that payment at time of building permit is more appropriate.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the time, date, and location for a public hearing. A motion is in order. Please continue, Ms. Dozeman.
I move to approve Council Bill Number thirteen dash twenty twenty, An Ordnance Amending Chapter Twenty-Six of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws pertaining to the Form and Timing of Cash and Loop Payment for Parkland Dedication Requirements. On first reading, order it published, public hearings set for Monday, July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, at seven P M as a virtual meeting and then it take effect fifteen days after publication.
Okay. We have a second by Mr. Urban. Um, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. And will the clerk please tally the votes?
You can't hear me saying it passed unanimously until I unmute. Sorry.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, we will go to agenda item number three. Ms. Nosler Beck, would you please introduce this item?
Thanks, Mayor. Council Bill Number fourteen dash twenty twenty, An Ordnance Amending Chapter Twenty-Six of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Notice Requirements for Continued and Postponed Public Hearings. Case Number Z O A dash twenty dash oh-four. At issue, requirements for the notice of public hearings are provided in the City Charter and Chapter Twenty-Six of the Code of Laws. This includes notice by sign and letter as well as publication in the newspaper and on the city's website. Sometimes a public hearing is continued or postponed. And this code amendment provides procedural, procedural, too tired, clarity on notice requirements for those situations.
Thank you. This is an, an ordinance on first reading to set the time, date, and location for a public hearing. Uh, a motion is in order.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Urban?
Um, on this particular item, we're, we're taking a first-reading vote prior to the planning commission uh having their first public hearing on this matter, and I'm curious as to why that is.
Uh, would, uh, Mr. Goff, that's a question out of my range.
Yeah, we, Mr. Urban, we occasionally do that, I think for timing reasons. Um, we like to get it to Planning Commission originally. Um, or most of the time, um, before we do first reading, but um, if there's anything um um, anything from Planning Commission that City Council needs to know, obviously that will come at, at a public hearing. But I'll ask Ken Johnstone, um, if he's got anything to add to that.
Yeah, no, that's absolutely correct. We, we like to uh not have first readings before Planning Commission when at all possible. But this is a fairly timely ordinance, just to the extent that the city attorney has advised that we really need this clarification um to be codified. And so that's why we uh, we strayed from that typical protocol in this instance.
Yeah, thank you. I, uh, I'll, I'll vote in favor of this first reading, but uh, I, I would prefer, and I understand it's a timing issue, but I would prefer that we uh have planning commission hearings prior to us voting on it. So the planning commission doesn't feel like they're pressured to vote one way or the other.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Nosler Beck, a motion on item number three.
I move to approve Council Bill Number fourteen dash twenty twenty, An Ordnance Amending Chapter Twenty-Six of The Wheat Ridge Code of Laws Concerning Notice Requirements for Continued and Postponed Public Hearings. On first reading, order it published, public hearings set for Monday, July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, at seven P M as a virtual meeting and then it take effect fifteen days after final publication.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Mr. Stites. Will the clerk please poll the council? All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously. Thank you very much. We will go to agenda item number four. Ms. Hoppy, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a motion to amend the contract for engineering consulting services for phase two of the Wadsworth Boulevard Improvement Project with HDR Engineering, Inc., Denver, Colorado, to incorporate additional design fees in the amount of three hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-seven dollars for a total project cost of two million, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars, five hundred and fifty-seven, two million, five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twelve cents. At issue, in April twenty fifteen, the city was awarded funding through the Denver Regional Council of Governments, Dr. Cog. Transportation Improvement Program tip to improve Wadsworth Boulevard from Thirty-Fifth Avenue to Forty-Eighth Avenue. Local funding for the project was also generated with the voters' twenty-sixteen approval of the two-year ballot measure for a temporary half-cent sales tax and use tax uh rate increase due to changes from the original scope of work for the contract that was executed with the HDR Engineering, Inc. In twenty eighteen, a contract amendment, amendment needs to be executed to provide the funds necessary to complete the design phase of the project. This contract amendment includes the item shown in the attached scope of work. The largest scope item involves the addition of a noise wall between Thirty-Fifth and Thirty-Eighth Avenues on the east side of Wadsworth.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this item?
We don't. Uh, we have staff here to answer questions, but I think the issue statement that Ms. Hoppy ran, uh, read covered pretty much um the intent of this.
Okay, uh, before we go to questions of staff, I will uh open this up for public comment. Is there anyone with the public who is with us tonight, either in person at city council chambers, on Zoom format, or on the telephone, who would like to uh speak on this item? You may do so now if you would speak up and let me know and I will recognize you.
Mayor, we have Vivian Voss here in chambers.
Uh, Ms. Voss, please introduce yourself. Give us your name and your address again and we'll uh let you speak on this.
All right. Thank you very much. Vivian Voss, V O S, six nine two zero, West Forty-seventh Place. I know this is, yes, I know.
Please continue.
Yes, I know this is about funding, but because all of these items that I'm going to speak to are in the pages of the Request for City Council Action, um, I'm going to address those. I've been following this as much as I can through public input and meetings uh that have been had. I haven't read every single time this has been updated, but today this, this catches me off guard with a noise wall between Thirty-Fifth and Thirty-Eight on the east side of Wadsworth. I'm wondering when and how and why and who, who needed that noise wall. I've also, first time I'm seeing that there are medians in the center of Wadsworth. There are no medians north or south in any other city along Wadsworth that I can recollect. So I'm wondering what that's about and why. I did see that the continuous flow lane intersections can be uh taken care of during a snowstorm and uh any kind of debris catch. But I'm not sure that I feasibly see that in my mind's eye. I live in the neighborhood where they're trying to take the neighborhood access to forty, on Forty-Eighth Avenue under Wadsworth away from us with a cul-de-sac. I'll tell you, nobody in the neighborhood's appreciating that whatsoever. And then we've got retaining walls at the north end of the project. And I assume that's the retaining wall uh that is already there on the west side, if I followed some of these information, and then um taking out the retaining wall on the east side. Um, who was at the meeting for the, where the quote-unquote "final plans" were completed with a final office review meeting being held on June twenty-two, twenty twenty? I don't see that that was a public meeting. I'm not sure what final office review is about. And I also had a concern with the fact that they kept mentioning in the Section One post for extra work on the scope of work pages, Attachment One, that they're always referring to an F O R. Um, acronyms are not to be had if they're speaking to outside of the industry that knows those acronyms. So I think that needs to be explained what an F O R is. It's rather repeated throughout the whole um paperwork. And I'm not sure what a spread design is. There was just so many questions in this. Um, a direct expense of printing and production of forty-two-hundred door hangers? When was that supposed to happen and where was that supposed to happen? Uh, collection and delivery of forty-two-hundred door hangers, when was that? Um, I just think there's a lot of questions in here that the public needs to know about and have more of a discussion as to what some of these items are that I have specifically brought up. I definitely have not a problem with C dot managing their own road. But I do have a problem with the city wanting something that they don't need, disrupting the businesses along uh Wadsworth, disrupting the neighborhoods. Uh, this larger project is just going to be a nightmare. And I think during this time of fear and people wondering what they're going to do next with their lives and such-and-such and businesses decimated by this COVID, I think now, this year, the next one, two, three years is not the time for us to be doing something of this level along a major arterial through the city and um unhappy with messing with my neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public who would like to speak on this? Uh, you, it's available to speak now, either in person in council chambers, on the Zoom format, or uh on the telephone?
There's no one else in chambers, Mayor, and I don't see anyone online that would like to speak.
Okay, thank you. We will, we will conclude our public uh uh comment on this item and uh go to council, uh, questions from council. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as it relates to the estimated costs in this amendment, what percentage or which items have already been completed? It, it seems as though in reading through some of these that these are items that have previously been worked on and already been completed. And I'm curious as to, do we have an estimation of how much of this has already been done?
Miss, uh, Mr., uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Urban. Uh, Mark Westberg, our uh project engineer, is online and he can answer that question.
Mr. Westberg?
I will, I'll answer in a general way. Some of these things have been done. Some of them have to be done yet. I, I don't know the exact percentage of that. The F O R meeting, the, the, the final office review is just a meeting that C dot has where they review the ninety percent plans, which is where we are. We're getting close to having the design plans all ready to go and and be out to bid and stuff. Um, so a lot of that has been done, but some of this, some of this work, in particular the noise wall, um, which is a new item that was added fairly recently um, due to the, the vote with the, with the property owner and the residents. Um, a lot of that work still has to be done yet, but a lot of this other work has already been done. Um, we've just been so busy trying to get it done that we've not really caught up on the paperwork and we finally have had enough of a break in things to try to get caught up on some paperwork and um, that's really the purpose of this amendment is to, is to make the consultant whole again and and uh be able to get this project finished up with all the things that were done out of scope that are listed in the, in the, the council packet.
Um, and you mentioned something with respect to a vote and that's how we got to the noise wall. Could you walk us through that?
Yeah, so there were, there were a couple of properties, um, multifamily properties along the corridor that were identified as potential uh potentially benefiting from having a noise wall. And so the process you go, the federal process you go through on that is that you prepare a survey and you send it out to all the residents of those, of those um, sorry, residential units, those are housing units. And in this case, it was both senior housing units, the two that were, that were up for this vote. And um, and the property owner gets one vote and all the residents get a vote. Well, the, the property owner each unit gets a vote. In this case, that means that the underlying property, these are all multifamily, but they're all owned by one person. They're, they're rented out and stuff. Um, that they basically get a fifty percent vote in things. And so if anybody else votes yes, then, then, then the noise wall happens. So the mornings, I believe it's Morning Side. I get that one confused with Morning Star all the time. But the Morning Side, which is across from Lucky's basically, um, those folks decided that they wanted a noise wall. And so we're building a twenty-foot-high noise wall that's, I think, four hundred and fifty feet long along the entire stretch of that property along Wadsworth.
And is that part of the, has that been recognized in the E A prior to its being signed or how does that affect the E A?
Yes, that was all, that was all identified in the E A um for, for all the various impacts that it might have. And then the, the vote and everything, all of that stuff happened after the, the Fonzie was signed, the finding of no significant impact was signed. Uh, but that included the noise wall as a possibility. So that's, we don't have to go revisit or reevaluate anything.
Okay. Um, then what, what's our procedure for allowing a consultant to work on stuff that we haven't budgeted or amended for?
So from a budget standpoint, um, the Wadsworth, all of the stuff on the costs on Wadsworth, right-of-way consultants, construction, everything is just a single item on the, the city's budget. So, so we've have, we have plenty of money in this year's budget because we thought construction would start this fall and construction is not going to start until next spring to cover these costs. Um, again, these were out-of-scope costs that weren't identified back when this original contract was done. Um, and so like I said, we've just sort of finally gotten caught up on figuring out what all those things were and getting all that put together and and getting it to council. We started working on this back in November of last year and then we got a little hung up with, with the COVID thing and, and all of us scattering to our homes. Um, and so there's been a real delay in getting this to council, but, but um, that's, that's why it's before you tonight.
And uh, one last question. Uh, the forty-two-hundred door hangers, where did those go?
Those were done as a part of the, the uh public outreach that was done for the public meeting for the E A. So that, that happened, you know, quite a while back. Um, it's just something that as they were going through, I told them, what I told the consultant was we need to figure out anything that was out of scope and get it taken care of in one fell swoop here. And that's why you're seeing some of these things that are yet to be happened and some things that have happened a while ago. They, they realized this was an out-of-scope thing and so they're, they're, we're, we're now dealing with that.
So what, what, what neighborhoods or what areas that the forty-two-hundred go out to? Was it?
Those went out to, those went out to neighborhoods on both sides of Wadsworth. That was within our, our notification. Um, where we went, we went out one property by, I, I don't remember what all that was, but we went out to a fairly significant um stretch. I know that where I used to live on Zephyr Street, um, north of Forty-fourth, I would get those door hangers and mailings and things from Wadsworth. Um, when those went out, I, I lived in Arvada, so I didn't actually get one, but, but those did go out to the neighborhoods on both. But but those did go to the neighborhoods on both sides to announce that public meeting for the the environmental assessment.
Thank you. Are there additional questions from council of staff on this issue? All right, seeing none, we will, we will close our discussion and Ms. Hoppy, a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to amend the contract for engineering consulting services for phase two of the Wadsworth Boulevard Improvement with H D R Engineering Inc., Denver, Colorado, to incorporate a different $27 for a total project of $77.12.
That was pretty garbled. Do you think you could come through it again and?
Or maybe somebody else?
Or?
Can you hear, can you guys hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay. I've moved to amend the contract for engineering consulting services for phase two of the Wadsworth Boulevard Improvement Project with H D R Engineering Inc., Denver, Colorado, to incorporate additional design fees in the amount of $384,627 for a total project cost of $2,529,557.12.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Ms. Dozeman. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council? All those in favor signify by saying or by raising your hand. Mr. Mayor, I see eight i-votes. The motion is carried. Okay, thank you very much. We will go to agenda item number five. Ms. Hutchinson, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 37-2020, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Edgewater regarding the 26th Avenue Drainage Improvements. Issue, in late 2016, the city was approached by the City of Edgewater for help in resolving a drainage issue at the intersection of 26th Avenue and Fenton Street on the city's mutual border. Multiple issues were found with the existing storm sewer system in both cities requiring that the storm sewer system be replaced. The attached resolution approves an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, allowing Edgewater to reconstruct the storm sewer system and be reimbursed by the City of Wheat Ridge for the city's share of the cost.
Thank you very much. This is a resolution. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
Only if there's any questions. We have staff here to answer questions.
Okay, before we go to questions, I will go to members of the public. If you would like to speak on this item number five, you may do so. If you will just indicate right now with myself or Ms. Scheck, we will get you on the screen or on the audio. I don't hear it. I'm sorry, Ms., anyone?
I was just saying, there's no one in chambers, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. I don't hear anyone from the public wishing to speak, so I will go to council for questions. Seeing none, I will ask for a motion from Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve resolution number 37-2020, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Edgewater regarding the 26th Avenue Drainage Improvements.
We have a second by Mr. Urban. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion, we will go to a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by raising your hands, and the clerk will toll, will count the votes. Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously. Thank you very much. We will go to agenda item number six. Ms. Holtein, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce resolution 38-2020, a resolution concerning the acquisition and acceptance of 4084 Wadsworth Boulevard for the purpose of constructing, installing, maintaining, and using public improvements for improving Wadsworth Boulevard by either negotiation and voluntary purchase or, if necessary, through the utilization of the city's power of eminent domain and authorizing such action as necessary to accomplish said purposes.
Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, Ed issued the proposed improvements to Wadsworth Boulevard require that additional right-of-way be purchased to allow for the construction of public improvements. In order to facilitate the acquisition of property at 4084 Wadsworth and the subsequent relocation of the current tenant, Roberto's, the property owner has requested that the property be purchased under the threat of eminent domain. This is a common request when municipalities purchase properties for public projects, and it provides significant tax benefits to the seller pursuant to international or Internal Revenue Code, Section 1033. In this situation, the property seller will be allowed to defer any capital gains from the sale for up to three years rather than the standard 180 days. All other terms of the purchase of this property have been negotiated in good faith between the city and the property owner and have been finalized.
Thank you very much. Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
Again, I think the issue statement explains this pretty well, but staff is here to answer questions. But the property owner, Ed Colson, I believe, is online, and he would like to speak, asking for this from city council.
Okay, I'd like to recognize Mr. Colson if you'd like to speak now.
Well, thank you. I'm not sure I need to speak. I was here to answer any questions, if there were any, on my request for the language put into the purchase agreement indicating that if I didn't voluntarily sell the property to the City of Wheat Ridge, that you would condemn it, which my accountant tells me allows me to qualify for a 1033 versus a 1031 exchange.
Thank you very much, sir. Before we go to questions of council, I will ask, ask for any public comment on this item. If there's anyone from this public who would like to speak on this, you may do so now. Please speak up. I don't hear anyone, so we will close our public comment, and I will go to questions from council. Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This question may be for the city attorney. In order for us to be in a position to threaten to condemn a property, are there any previous actions we would have need to take to present that posture? Or how do we present that without ever having taken any steps towards that effort?
You do it frankly as a resolution that's in front of you. You've, you've, under the condemnation laws, you've engaged in good faith negotiations with the property owner. And in fact, as as Mark Westberg has said, you, we actually have a an agreement for purchase with the with the property owner. And so really, you've done all of, the city has taken all of the actions necessary as a precondition to a resolution of intent to condemn or authorizing condemnation. City's already done that through the negotiation, good faith negotiation process that's required by the statute. The only other action that you need to take to accommodate the the applicant here is actually passing the resolution. In many circumstances, many cities, they start with this resolution before they even talk to the property owner. Wheat Ridge has a very different tradition around that, and I think an honorable one, where discussions with the property owners are what are done first. And the absolute last action or effort is is a resolution if they're unable to reach agreement with property owner. So here, all of that preceding work has been done. There's no further preconditions to your ability to pass this resolution.
And so do we need to allow the city attorney and city staff the authority to pursue eminent domain proceedings in order for him to obtain the 1033 designation? Or could we not say that if the negotiations don't result in the sale or sale of property, then we would come back and look at that? Do we have to authorize that ahead of time?
Well, at this point, you you have done all of the negotiations. Mark can tell me if I'm wrong about that, but you've done all the negotiations. Only what the property owner is asking for is, before we close on this deal, which we've really already negotiated, I need language to be able to to satisfy my accountant and frankly, the IRS. When he then, taking the proceeds, he will want to then take advantage of a 1033 exchange, which gives him more time to to reinvest those proceeds as capital gain. So the, the, there's sort of no other way to do it. You're doing the minimum necessary now. If you were to say, okay, explore discussions with the applicant and if, or the property owner unsuccessful, come back to us. That's what's already been done. And and if you were to say that tonight, it just doesn't deliver for the, Mr. Colson, what what he needs for his accountant.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further questions before we go to a motion? Seeing none, Ms. Holtein, may I have a motion on agenda item number six?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve resolution number 38-2020, a resolution concerning the acquisition and acceptance of 4084 Wadsworth Boulevard for the purpose of constructing, installing, maintaining, and using public improvements for improving Wadsworth Boulevard by either negotiation and voluntary purchase or, if necessary, through the utilization of the city's power of eminent domain and authorizing such action as necessary to accomplish said purposes.
Okay.
We had a second by Ms. Hoppy on this one. Is there discussion on the on the motion? Seeing none, we will go to a vote. Will all those in favor of the motion please raise your hand? And will the clerk please tally the votes? Ms. Nosler Beck, are you in this one?
I'm just, I'm just not, I'm going to vote no.
Okay, that's good. Mr. Mayor, we have seven i-votes. Okay, all those opposed, same sign. Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed seven to one. Thank you very much. We will go to agenda item number seven. Mr. Urban, would you introduce?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 39-2020, a resolution concerning the leaseback of property located at 4084 Wadsworth Boulevard to Edward E. Colson III Trust at All. The proposed improvements to the Wadsworth Boulevard require that additional right-of-way be purchased to allow for the construction of public improvements in order to facilitate the acquisition of property at 4084 Wadsworth and the subsequent relocation of the current tenant, Roberto's. City council must approve resolution authorizing leasing the property back to Roberto's for the limited period of time.
Thank you. Any further staff report on this, Mr. Goff?
Again, we're here for any questions. This is very similar to the leaseback we did with the Midas property on 38th and Kipling, or 38th and Wadsworth.
Thank you very much. Before we go to questions of council, I will ask if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak on this issue. You may do so now, speak up. I will recognize you. Hearing none, we will close our our public comment and open it to questions from council of staff. Or we have Mr. Colson here also. Do I have any questions? Seeing none, a, we will go to a motion. Mr. Urban, may I have a motion on this?
I move to approve resolution 39-2020, a resolution concerning the leaseback of property located at 4084 Wadsworth Boulevard to Edward E. Colson III Trust at All.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Mr. Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we will go to a vote. Will all those in favor of the motion please raise your hand? And will the clerk please tally the votes? Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously. Thank you very much. That concludes our, the agenda items that we have on our agenda. We will now go to city managers' matters. Mr. Goff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Due to the late hour, I'll keep it very short with some good news. I mentioned this last week, but our financials are looking fairly positive. Our June revenues, which are sales tax are generated from May, are up. Sales and use tax are up 5% over last year at the same period. So something we didn't expect. Overall, general fund revenues are down still about 3%, primarily because of other revenue sources such as rec and recreation center and park fees. So hopefully, we'll, we'll keep a close eye on it. And if we continue on this trend, we might be able to make some positive adjustments back to the budget. We'll let you know soon.
Thank you very much. Good news there. City attorneys' matters, Mr. Dahl.
One item, I'd like to congratulate Councilmember Dozeman on her election of the CML Executive Board. It's an important organization, as council knows. It's a key advocacy organization for municipal interests in the state. And it's an honor and also really useful for the city to have someone on their executive board, which is their top policymaking body that will vote on what position CML will take on on bills in the legislature. And we'll be able to communicate back to you. Congratulations on that. And nothing else other than to suggest that if you get comments done by 11:00 PM, you won't have to take a motion to go past 11:00. Thank you.
Thank you for making those brief, Mr. Dahl. And I I echo your congratulations to Ms. Dozeman. Elected officials' matters, we'll start with Clerk Clerk Kirkpatrick.
Given the hour, I have nothing new.
Okay, thank you very much. We will go next to Treasurer Miller. I see Mr. Miller on the on the line.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank council for all their work tonight. There's certain nights I don't envy you, and tonight is definitely one of them. So thank you all for all your hard work and this late hour.
Thank you so much. Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thanks, Mayor. And I'll make this quick, but I just wanted to remind residents that our study session coming up has some important topics that I've been hearing from a lot of residents on specifically the noise ordinance and the issue of the homeless population in Wheat Ridge. So make sure to utilize Wheat Ridge Speaks and reach out to us on council so that we can talk about those issues leading up to this, to the study session. And I think that's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you. We will go next to Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Jerry Dahl, for extending your congratulations. I am very honored to be on the CML Executive Board. I I think it's a great opportunity, and I've already learned a lot. And and, you know, I love that we're starting to see how beneficial our local governments can be and how accessible and effective and efficient that they are. I think that we have really, especially here in Wheat Ridge, like, we've, we've really stepped up and been there for our residents and for our businesses. And during times like these, you you are very grateful and and recognize the importance of local government. And so I just wanted to say thank you to everyone and keep up the great work.
Thank you so much. Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, because it's late, I will keep it short. Thank you to everybody who spoke tonight, the residents who gave their opinions about everything, but especially the project Johnson, and that's all. And congratulations, Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you so much. Ms. Weaver.
Goats are going back to Lewis Meadows this Saturday. So I'm not sure we will be able to have a parade, but they will be out at the park if. Matt, can I invite people to come out to the park? Is that an okay thing, Mr. Goff?
As long as they practice social distancing and wear their masks.
Okay, and we will, we will not be doing any group things, though that will be the goats' job. The goats will be in a group, and we will all be dispersed. But I would love for anyone to come out and say hello, and I And we will all be dispersed, but I would love for anyone to come out and say hello and I can, I can introduce at a distance.
So this is this, this, this coming Saturday?
This is the inaugural two thousand twenty tour, starting from Meadows.
Well, I will be, look forward to seeing them. I hope they all have their masks on, so that would be good. Thank you. You're mute. Ms. Holtein.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to first thank everyone who took time to speak tonight. And I also especially want to thank city staff for going to the efforts to make, speaking in person at city hall, an option. I know that really makes a difference on things like this and I know it takes a lot of coordination and skill. And I just am grateful that that opportunity was available and that people took advantage of it. It makes, makes a difference. And then just a quick thank you to Wheat Ridge Police Department who participated in a community meeting I hosted last week in partnership with Saint James about how our community can work together to help serve the people experiencing homelessness in our community. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week I did notice when I was filling out my gas can for my lawnmower that the Bradley Station at Thirty-Eighth and Reed is going to be closing on Wednesday. So it's been there a long time.
Thank you very much. Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was curious what the status is with our massage therapy licensing program and what, when we're going to see that on the agenda.
Yeah, I think it's on there now. And if Ally, if you're listening, we had a forum, a reach out to the industry, I think this last week on Zoom and I haven't gotten an update on that, but we do have it scheduled for first reading, I think, at our next business meeting. Ally, you're on mute.
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me? Yes, that's correct. We did, we did. We had a public meeting last week with the businesses. This will be coming to you for first reading on the twenty-seventh and it's scheduled for second reading on August tenth.
Thank you very much. I appreciate our attention to that matter as it relates to the more grotesque aspects of human trafficking and whatnot. I think this is an important issue that we need to keep track of and take care of as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Urban. Ms. Hoppy.
I thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to, some of, we've had several comments from our citizens about how how can we petition safely and I'm not going to say this is an official recommendation, but I really thought about how, if I were in that situation, how I would do it. So here is my suggestion. I, a cup of clean pens, a cup for dirty pens, I can petition. I would have gloves that you can get cheaply. And then I would have hand sanitizer. I would wear my mask and knock on doors and talk to people, then step away from the wagon for them to put the gloves on and sign the petition. So I just, I know that we can be creative and that people can get creative to be able to to be able to circle petitions if that's what they choose to do.
Thank you very much. I want to sort of conclude with my thanks to all of the people who participated in our meeting tonight. We had a robust discussion, I believe, in a public hearing. We've had a lot of energy focused in in being able to be transparent and open about the work that we do and inviting the public into our work because it's very important because we are a public-driven organization as a city council and I am I, I hope that that the people that were able to participate in city council in the Zoom format or on the telephone felt that their participation was meaningful and we we strive to to accommodate that. So I want to thank the people who joined me on on Coffee with the Mayor this last Saturday. We had some very good discussions. And I want to, want to thank our city staff and our police and public safety officials for doing the work that they're doing to keep our our city safe and operational in these emergency times. So once again, we have a study session next week. I hope you will, you will tune into it and be give us your feedback on the items that are coming up. We appreciate that. So if there's no further business to come before council, we will stand adjourned.